Good morning and welcome to the August 27, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, if we could rise for a moment of silence. This moment of silence is going to be dedicated to Keith Kirsch, who passed away last week. He was a building inspector for the County of Lake and lived in the city of Lakeport. Supervisor Crandall, can you leave this in the pledge, please?
Yes. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agendas. Any extra items? Five, approval of consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that are seen as non-controversial and can be moved by one motion unless somebody from the board wishes to remove an item for further clarification. Any items wishing to be moved from the board? Any comments or questions from the public on the consent agenda? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I'm the chair, I move to approve consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.10.
Second.
I have motion to second, all in favor? Aye. Any post? Motion carries. Okay, we are early for our 9:05 items, so we're going to go to calendar. Supervisor Sabatier.
I wasn't ready for that. You're going to have to give me a few seconds.
Anybody else ready?
Almost. Yes.
No, it's all good.
I was updating or something. After the meeting today, I have North Shore Business Association mixer tonight. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with constituents on the North Shore, a meeting on the 29th with a constituent, and it's my son's birthday that day, he's 14, Friday, so I'll be taking him out. Friday, I have a call meeting with Carol, and then the logo, the gentleman who did the logo. Yeah, we'll be doing that, and then there's no meeting next week. So we got a next week Middle Creek Restoration Earth, and that's next week, Tuesday and Wednesday, so.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So today, I'm going to go back and help out a student over at the Woodland Community College that has been contacting me for some help. Tomorrow, I have a phone call conference with the Upstate California Connect Consortium. We're working on the broadband master plan for the county, going to be working on that with them, and meeting with the constituent later on that day, and then joining the IHSS meeting that I was invited to in the afternoon. On Thursday, I'll be doing a, I'm not sure exactly what I'm in for, but some sort of cannabis tour, and on Friday, I'm going to be prepping for a car show that will be happening over in the city of Clear Lake that's happening over the long weekend. And I plan on being back here on the 3rd, on Tuesday, for a Middle Creek Committee meeting, and we'll have another meeting to follow up on our ad hoc committee for the tax collector on Wednesday, the 4th, as well as a meeting with CC4C over in the city of Clear Lake. And that's all I have all the way through. And then there's, just to remind everybody that in the North Shore, is it going to be in Upper Lake, that there's a North Shore Housing Fair that's...
Oh yeah, that's on Saturday, September 7.
Yeah, and I was planning on going by just because I like seeing those things and learning more about what housing opportunities are around for everybody. And then I'll be back here on the 9th, meeting with our CAO, and getting prepared for our 10th meeting.
Great. Supervisor Simon.
After today's meeting, looks like a potential meeting with myself, you, and Carol. Talk about a meeting with Pepperwood that we have on September 6. The rest of the week, this is my first fair week. My son's showing a goat this weekend, so I think he shows up tomorrow, which is pretty neat. So if you have a chance, go out and support the FFA and the 4-H Kids, the fair this weekend. Moving along, Friday, I have the Risk Reduction Authority photo here with our new logo, EJ, and also the individual who won the contest. Saturday, early morning, I have Anderson Springs HOA. I'm going to try and be there for a little bit before I head up to the auction on Saturday. So I'll be kind of the weekend at the fair. Next week, oh, thank you very much. Thanks, Sam. Next week, kind of an open calendar next week, I have a couple of different things. I have Thursday, I have the CSAC meeting on Thursday, the 5th, over in Sacramento, and then I'll have office hours on Friday, the 6th, in the morning down in Middletown at the Gibson Museum, and then there's a ribbon cutting for Rainbow Ag. Rainbow Ag has got another site down, they bought CGS Ranch down in Middletown, becoming Rainbow Ag, so I'll be there at that ribbon cutting, and then back here on Monday to have a meeting with Carol, and back here on the 10th for Tuesday for our meeting.
Okay, Supervisor Brown.
I'll be leaving at noon today, and I'll be back next Wednesday. That's my calendar.
Hi, my calendar after today's meeting, I'm meeting with Supervisor Simon, talking about the Pepperwood meeting we'll be having on the 6th. I have a phone meeting with Assemblywoman Agir Curry at 2:30. I have to, at some point, get my baked goods into the fair so they can be judged, I'm really excited about that. I have four items going in. I was up at 2:30 this morning, making brownies. Tomorrow, I will be...
Maybe you could connect with Bruno's tour.
We were gathering the special ingredient.
I'm actually going on that tour, too, so maybe I'll bring some brownies along. I'll be serving lunch at Mendocino College on Wednesday to the returning students, that's going to be exciting to see all of them returning. And then I have a meeting at 5 o'clock in Mendocino, talking about CASA and what we can do to help support our court-appointed special advocates and help our foster youth in our community. So if you're interested in finding out more about CASA, want to volunteer, give me a call, 849-4414. On Thursday, I will be going with Supervisor Sabatier over to Flocana. And then Friday, my husband's coming home after being gone for two months, so I'll be picking him up at the airport, and then attending the fair all weekend. And then on Tuesday, agenda review, I'm assuming at 11:30, then I'll be in the office. And next week looks pretty, pretty open. And then back here on the following week. Okay, with that, we are at 9:08, so we can take up our 9:05 AM item, our public input. We will start with Rhonda. Rhonda, request board support to try to put a project in to help with the culvert on Scotts Valley Road.
Good morning, Honorable Chair Tina Scott and distinguished members of the board. My name is Rhonda Armstrong, and I serve as the Chair of the Scotts Valley Advisory Council. The purpose of the council is to participate in the decision-making processes by providing citizen input, advice, direction, and guidance regarding issues that affect Scotts Valley. These issues include matters of public health, safety, welfare, public works, planning, quality of life, and land use. I come before you today to bring to your attention the need to expedite the installation of a culvert located at 4200 Scotts Valley Road. This culvert has not been functioning for over three years, and as a result, has caused the flooding of homes, property, and Scotts Valley Road for long periods of time. Homes and property, as well as Scotts Valley Road, are being damaged, and Scotts Valley Road is closed, trapping many residences in their homes. We understand funding to repair this culvert will be made available upon approval by this board during the final budget in September. We respectfully request the board's support to prioritize the installation of this culvert as an urgent project to the Roads Department to be completed before the end of this year. We've suffered long enough. Thank you.
Paula Moonay, speaking about the budget item regarding the culvert.
Good morning. Good morning, Supervisors. I would like to speak to the budget item regarding culvert installation on Scotts Valley Road. My name is Paula Moonay, and I retired after teaching in Lakeport for 30 years. I lived on, I have lived on Scotts Valley Road for 22 years, and most of the years, if not every year, the rainwater flows over the road in several areas for very, very far distances. Many of my neighbors, including the school buses, are unable to drive through the floodwaters for many days each rainy season. You will be voting on the budget item next month. I urge you to support the culvert installation that would move the water from the roadside ditch into the creek. Once the project is approved, the culvert needs to be installed as soon as possible because the rainy season is upon us. Thank you.
And the last citizen's input is Joel, flooding on Scotts Valley Road.
Good morning. Thank you very much, Supervisors, and I'd like to say thank you to all of the board. My name is Joel Kobel, I live on Scotts Valley Road. If you're familiar with it at all or have ever driven it, you'll remember that long, straight stretch, it's about a mile and a half, pretty flat, runs north and south, so I'm kind of in the middle of that. My address is 3482 Scotts Valley Road. When you drive that road, it looks flat, but it's not. I'm at the lowest spot. I was there in January, the middle of...
You could get a little closer to the microphone, so it's public hearing.
Sure. I was there in January, and it flooded, I was there, I couldn't get in. I could walk in in the middle of February, but I couldn't drive in. As Paula said, I was stuck there in January, I couldn't leave because of the road flooding. February, I couldn't get in because of the road flooding, and then at the end of February, and maybe the first couple of days of March, my house was flooded. So first two floods got into the garage and cottage. Final flood, end of February flooded my house, and none of those times was I able to access it. That's the lowest spot on the road, I think. My mailbox is about the same height as this podium, and there was mud inside the mailbox, so it made it impossible for me to get in. I'm not sure about the health hazard of this, of what all is washing downstream or being plugged up because the culvert doesn't work. I find all sorts of odd items lying around that are not mine that washed onto my property. I don't know how much good it would do to enlarge, replace and enlarge that culvert. I'm hoping that that's a fairly simple problem, simpler than the problems, say, of restoring the forest or the vegetation up on the hills of the Maya Comas higher up on Scotts Valley Creek. And I don't know about fixing up the levees entirely, but this seems like a simple, solvable problem. Probably the Public Works Department would know how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and because it's a public comment, we can't talk back, have a conversation, but they just want to make sure that my full board was aware of the issues out there, so I thank you. Okay, we are a minute early for our 9:15 AM item.
Want me to give an update about the Eel Russian River Commission meeting?
Sure, why don't you do that?
So Friday, I attended the Eel Russian River Commission meeting over in Ukiah, and it went from, I think, 10 to like 2 or so. It went pretty well. Patrick was there, Patrick was there, and I was really glad to see him. I reassured the commission, because the commission consists of Humboldt, Mendocino, Sonoma, and Lake County. And so I was reassuring them that our resolution that we just passed and discussed was more of a co-equal approach, rather than the friends of the Eel gentleman that came to our meeting, he was at the other meeting as well, saying many of the same things. And so I reassured them, the meeting went well, the others felt that I was genuine in what we stated. The other thing to mention is that there were studies, PG&E was there to talk about some of the studies that they were going to conduct, or they have been conducting, they're going to hopefully pass those forward into the notice of intent, planning session agreement, and give that information so that could help with the feasibility study that they're going to conduct. So that was pretty much it, but it was successful, so.
Thank you. And Anita?
I would just mention that that resolution is back on after speaking with Supervisor Crandall, just for some housekeeping details that I didn't have the authority to change without your approval.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I thank you, because now we are at 9:16, so we can take up our 6.2 item, our 9:15 AM item, public hearing, sitting as the Lake County Watership Protection District, consideration of resolution to form the Big Valley Groundwater Sustainability Agency in accordance with the Sustainability Groundwater Management Act, which went into effect as California Water Code Section 10720 ETS-EQ on January 1, 2015. Scott?
Good morning, Scott DeLeon, Interim Water Resources Director. After, if you recall, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago about this item, took a lot of public input, which was greatly appreciated. At the end of that meeting, you indicated consensus to move forward as it was presented, so nothing has really changed. In the last two weeks, we accomplished the appropriate public noticing that is required as part of our application to the state. So today is, again, an opportunity for additional public input, and if your board chooses the adoption of the resolution, and upon that adoption, we will move forward in putting our application into the state for the formation of the Big Valley GSA.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Any questions, Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to ask some questions that I think I know the answers to because of our conversation we had before, just for clarification purposes. There was a lot of talk in the audience last time about the water table actually rising, or the basin being plentiful at this moment in time. So that is the case? It's not diminishing at this moment in time? Other than maybe 2013, where we were in a drought situation, that might have been the opposite.
So we've been monitoring wells in this basin for 50 years, at least, and even through the drought periods of the 70s, the drought in 2013, the basin shows that it recovers. And yes, as the agricultural practices have changed in the basin, from pears to other products, we're seeing a definite change in the availability and the use in the groundwater. And the basin is healthy, and this really is an effort to maintain local control over the basin, as opposed to having the state come in and take it over, which I think we all agree is a good thing.
Right. And the basin was set at a medium priority, but that's being worked on separately to being resubmitted so that it can become a low priority, where now we're not forced to do certain things, correct?
That is correct. We're going to be, we're going to be working with the constituents and the stakeholders in the basin to submit additional information to the state with the attempt to reduce its priority from medium to low. So it's kind of a parallel effort, and again, this step of forming the GSA is required by state law, and again, we're doing this to maintain local control over the basin.
Right. And so at this moment, just as you said, it is plentiful, it's well-sustained at this moment, but for future growth purposes, the GSA will help to manage that growth. And then also, I believe you stated that it gives you possibilities of grants through the state or federal government to be able to work on that basin to ensure that it has longevity?
That is correct. The state mandates that you have to have a GSA to be eligible for different funding options, so again, this will accomplish a number of things, including making us eligible for grant funding.
Right. And then, so once this is approved and the committee is created, the committee will be the one that kind of advises what projects or what grant funding capabilities or possibilities are out there to go after, so that we can go ahead and do the work that's needed? That'll come back to the board as well, since that's going to be an approval of grants and stuff like that, just like your normal typical grant?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Any further questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? If you could state your name, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau. The Farm Bureau supports adopting the resolution today to form the GSA to avoid state water board coming in and managing this basin for us. I just wanted to give you a quick update. Since the last meeting a couple of weeks ago, Lake County Farm Bureau submitted some comments to State DWR. They have a series of files that they used to categorize the basin, and so we updated them on some agriculture-specific information that was wrong in their files. We submitted that by the 15th was when we submitted it, the 17th was the deadline, so we got that information in by the deadline, and we look forward to working with Lake County Department of Water Resources moving forward to submit additional information. When looking in through their calculations, there is some wiggle room. Again, when we did this process with Upper Lake, they started out in high priority, a couple of points above where Big Valley is, and just by updating that information and working with water resources, we were able to get that basin bumped down to low priority. So we do support this two-pronged approach of forming the GSA so that the state water board does not come in and manage the basin for us, and then on the same track, submitting the appropriate information to hopefully reprioritize the basin to reflect what currently stands. And then just one other thing, I wanted to reiterate our support of having a strong agriculture influence on whatever advisory commission you select for the board. I would again, again, encourage you to look at the Big Valley Management Commission Zone, sorry, Big Valley Water, Groundwater Management Zone as that advisory committee. That is an existing committee that exists to advise on groundwater issues in Big Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenna. Any further public comment? See no movement, then I'll bring it back. Supervisor Sabatier?
And just to go off of the comment that was just made, I count six for the representation on the advisory group. Will there be one of those identified groups that has more than one representative? I know we had talked about adding more than one agricultural user to the advisory board last time, and unless I miscounted, I believe I count six.
I'm looking for my iPad, so I don't have the backup right now, so I'm trying to locate it. I don't know where it was, but I saw...
Because I believe, typically, we would prefer an odd number, so that when there's a vote, it's easy to pass a vote for at least one way or the other. And here, I count six, and I'd be perfectly fine if the agricultural users had two representatives on this advisory board.
Yes, an even number's not going to work, so...
And seven is a manageable advisory group amount, so...
It's a board-appointed committee, and we've made a recommendation for who should sit on that, and I think your discussion is fitting and appropriate, and it's your committee, and so if you choose to put two seats on there for agricultural interests, I think that's your prerogative, and as Supervisor Brown pointed out, I think at the last meeting, of the high percentage of agricultural use in the basin would merit additional seats. And you're right, the, what we've, the groups that we've put on there are total six, so if you did do two seats for agricultural interest, that would make it an odd number.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
That's what I would like to propose.
I agree. So if there's nothing further, then I need somebody to offer the resolution.
I'll go ahead and offer the resolution with the amendment to add two seats for the agricultural.
The resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Director Simon?
Yes.
Director Sabatier?
Aye.
Director Crandall?
Aye.
Director Brown?
Aye.
Director Spott?
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Early for our 9:30, so we'll go ahead and take up our 7.2, discussion and consideration of consolidation of the Departments of Water Resources and Authority of Public Works Director. And who was...
Supervisor Brown, did you want to present that, or are you sure without your device?
No, I'm still trying to find it. Yeah, please.
I'm sure you'll find it at 12.
Okay, so on behalf of the committee, the chair formed to look at the structure of the Water Resources Department, that committee consisted of Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Crandall, and myself, and our Public Works Director, Scott DeLeon. And the summary of what we did was take a look at how water resources is structured in other counties, and included in your agenda packet is a chart, and I'm grateful to Scott and his staff for having this information available. If you look at this chart, you'll see that of the comparable counties examined, approximately half of them do have water resources established as a division of the Department of Public Works. Historically, that's how it was done here. It was changed, it was separated and made an independent department back in 2016 at the desire of one board member in particular who had a vision for more scientific work to be done by the position. But since that time, it's been obvious, and particularly the former Water Resource Director emphasized that there's less about science to this position and more about compliance and monitoring and grant writing and managing the staff and their functions. And so the committee's recommendation is that your board consider reconsolidating again, and if you do so, then the secondary recommendation would be that you leave the position structure as it is now. It is presently classified as Water Resources Director, and if you just leave it as is, taking no action in that regard, then it would enable the Public Works Director to move forward with that candidate pool. So we have continued to stay in contact with that candidate pool with the hope of ensuring their continuing interest, and so that pretty much summarizes the work of the committee and the recommendation at this time.
So any questions from the board? That was probably my concern, is to make sure we had a director over Water Resources still, so it would be, you would be over the director, and the director would be over the Water Resources, Scott?
No. He would be the director, and there would be a deputy.
Oh, a deputy over the Water, because I know it's very important.
No, actually, we're recommending that the classification remain as is, which is Water Resources Director, and it would report to the Public Works Director.
Oh, gotcha.
We have a few positions that are directors that report to a director. Environmental Health One reports to the Health Services Director, HR Director is a division head that reports to me. So we have a few of those.
So, okay, so I'm confused, and I was at the meeting, I thought that was the whole point of consolidation. You have a director.
To lower the classification, you mean, or...
No, that you have a director over both.
Yes, that's absolutely what's being recommended. This position would remain a Water Resources Director position, but it would report to the Public Works Director.
I got you, okay. All right. I thought it was going to be both, and...
Do you have anything to add, Scott?
There was going to be a deputy.
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah, that's what we talked about, so...
I think, I think the way that it's going to function, we're deputy versus director, it's going to function as a deputy.
Exactly.
With oversight.
Correct.
By me.
Right.
And the thing I felt and recognized in discussing with Scott was, he had guided the past two Water Resources Directors and mentored them with all of the history of what's going on in Water Resources anyhow, so...
And he was the Water Resources Director for a bit, so...
Supervisor Sabatier?
So my only major concern for this, and Scott maybe put a cap on, because I'm about to inflate your head a little bit, I really think that you have the skills to take this on and the abilities to take this on. I really think that you have the skills to take this on and the abilities to take this on, but once, you're not here forever. Once you leave, is there someone who can tackle and oversee two separate departments with two different types of understanding and knowledge that's required? You've had the privilege of working a long time in both of these departments, so you come with a lot of that knowledge. Will somebody, because right now, if you have two deputies on either side, they're not going to be cross-trained to do Water Resources and to do Public Works. How does one, in a succession plan, rise up and be able to really take on a whole other department that they have not really sunk their feet into? That's my only worry, is the long term of that. I know you can handle it, and you can take it, because you've done it in the past, and you've showed that you can excel, and you are excelling in this position since we placed you in interim. I just worry about the future succession plan and how that will translate.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for your support and your kind words. I do appreciate that. You know, succession plan, or succession planning is certainly something that is on the forefront of my mind. I, I see a need of that in the Public Works Department, and for example, you know, my Assistant Director position has been vacant for a couple of years now. Difficult to recruit folks. I'm hoping that as we move forward with class and compensation studies, that our positions will be more attractive, and we'll be able to recruit some qualified folks. You know, ultimately, what I want to see happen is the Assistant Director of Public Works position be filled specifically for that succession planning that you described, and with a deputy overseeing the day-to-day operations of Water Resources, then that management stays continuous, and the Assistant Director learns, because the Assistant Director of Public Works is also going to be overseeing functions of the Department of Water Resources, so.
I thought it was going to be completely separate.
No, no, no.
Okay.
We're going to maintain the autonomy, if you will, of the Department of Water Resources. It is not going to change to become the Division of Water Resources. We're going to continue to call it the Department. There's a lot of pride in the staff and the organization there that they're functioning as a department, and I don't intend to change that. And really, all we're doing is, we're bringing them into Public Works to help with fiscal functions, with the administration functions, and just provide additional oversight and leadership for the staff and some of those other functions that are going to, some of the Public Works staff will be helping assist with that and providing oversight.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board, or open up to the public? Is there any public comment or questions on this item? Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion to approve or consolidate the consolidation of the County Department of Public Works and Water Resources.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
We can go back to our timed item, our 6.3 item, our 9:30 a.m. item, Appeal Hearing. Transient Occupant Tax, TOT. They have settled with Ron, and Joanne Cicado was asked to have this moved to...
Yes, she, and originally, we were recommending continuing hers to the 10th of September, but she's not available that date. So, at this point, the proposed date would be September 24th, if that's agreeable to your board.
So, then I need a motion. Do you need to open up public comments to, no?
You can open it for public comment as to the continuance, but the hearing hasn't been opened.
Okay, so, I'll open up to public comment for continuance. Seeing no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for questions or comments.
I just had one question on availability and keep moving it out. Would we continue to do this, or would this be just a one-time opportunity for the individual as far as timing and availability?
The advice of council was that we offer one solid reschedule, yes?
Normally, normally, if there's a conflict in continuing a matter, it's up to your board. That's why it always comes to you. Staff can't approve it. But normally, your board approves if you believe there's sufficient cause for it, and it does not in any way harm the interests of the county to extend time.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm curious. Typically, for a hearing of these types, we have to do all kinds of noticing on the newspaper and such. We're going to have to re-notice again for the next one?
I don't believe this hearing involves a public notice. There's some timely noticing to the citizen who filed the appeal, but not public notice.
Yeah.
And the reason we're not suggesting the 17th is because Patrick Sullivan, who would present this to the board, cannot be available that day, so.
If there was public noticing, however, your board would address it by making a motion today to continue. That way, the notice wouldn't have to be redone.
And I'm going to be just very candid. I think that we have the entire appeal in our packet. It's pretty in-depth, the information we were given. I don't think that we would receive anything new or additional relevant material from having the person in front of us. We are trying to backtrack on collecting something that wasn't paid, and now we're giving them an extra time to, they filed the appeal, and now they're asking to, I feel like there's too much being requested for somebody who didn't follow the rules, and I would be ready to make a decision today.
Supervisor Brown?
Anita can address this better than I can, but you can do whatever you want, but we always, we've always in the past, any appeals, given the, given the appellant or either party an opportunity to continue it. Because we spent more time just talking about it than it'll take just to continue it. But the reality is, they don't set the date, and if it's not a convenient date, then you ask for another one. It happens regularly.
And court's inconvenient, too, but I should probably be there when they ask me to be there, too, so, just by opinion.
But they do continue in court all the time, just for that very purpose, all the time, so.
So, if there's nothing further, then I need a motion to move this to September 24th.
I'll make a motion to move it to September 24th for the appeal hearing.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we'll go on to our 7.3 item, Consideration of Resolution Adopting Recommendations to Address Fire Safe Regulations Applicable to Outdoor Cannabis Cultivation Operations. Who's starting this one? Is it?
Okay, so, at one point, there came the, a new interpretation of Fire Code 4290. I think it's Public Resource Code, PRC 4290, which stated that if you do a commercial activity, that this is the road standard, and commercial activity typically means that you have the public coming on and off of your property. It's kind of like a retail, manufacturing, light industrial, something along those kinds. And so, they want to make sure that the road standard is safe and conducive to that type of activity. When it came to outdoor cultivation of cannabis, it was deemed a commercial, because we call it commercial cannabis activity. I did, and so, there was a new interpretation that now roads needed to meet commercial standards. This gave us a roadblock for the progression we were having with cannabis cultivation, because of the prohibitive costs that would incur due to the building up of the road standards. And so, we met with the fire districts, Moak, Supervisor Simon, and myself with Community Development and Ms. Grant. We had Chief Sepeda, Chief Wink, and Chief Ciencio, I believe that's, I'm saying the name correctly. At the majority of the meetings, we also had a person from, I want to say the Department of Forestry, was that the person, representing Cal Fire, basically? To give us the interpretation of 4290 and SRA codes, which is State Responsibility Areas, which a large portion of our county is an SRA. And I also emailed, and I'm bringing it up so I can give you the exact wording that he gave back to me. A gentleman named Kevin Ponse from the California Department of Food and Agriculture. I explained to him the specific situation we were in, that 4290 was giving us a difficult time on interpretation when it came to cannabis. Because cannabis starts off with, it's a commercial cannabis activity, but then when you get into the nitty-gritty of cultivation law based from the state of California, the word "commercial" disappears. And in fact, in the last portion of the mandated needs for those who are doing an annual license, you need to prove that you're an agricultural employer. That's the last part of that. And so, I asked the question, asking him for a clarification, and he said, yes, cannabis cultivation is an agricultural activity. He gave us code within CDFA to support that it is an agricultural activity. Eventually, I also asked him that we have a, an issue with the wording of "commercial", and he said, it just means that it's now legally marketable. It doesn't mean that it's a commercial activity, it's just that instead of being illegal, now it's legal, so you can commercially sell it, but it doesn't mean the activity is commercial. All the other license types are commercial activities. The outdoor, not indoor, but the outdoor agriculture, cultivation of cannabis through CDFA, through the state of California and its code and regulations, is seen as an agricultural activity. So, before us today is a resolution that states all these findings, and that we are recommending that we follow PRC, Public Resource Code, 4290, under the idea that this is agriculture, which means that it is exempt from a road standard. With the continuation of the conversation with the fire districts, they brought up that they would like to see a road standard, but I have brought up that I want it to be fair across the board. If we're dealing with an agricultural activity, let's not segregate specific types of agricultural activities and what standards we apply to them versus others. And so, the intent as well within the resolution is to, and it says to have staff, but I'd rather it be maybe an ad hoc committee of sorts, to have a discussion and invite growers of all different type of agriculture. The Wine Growers Association should probably be invited, the Farm Bureau should be probably invited, the fire districts, so on and so forth, as well as cannabis and hemp growers, to discuss what would be an appropriate road standard. Rather than trying to force something down someone's throat and forcing them to follow certain rules and regulations, let's bring them to the table and let us know what would be an appropriate regulation and how that would work. There are many other counties who do have regulations for ag standards. We have zero standard whatsoever. And the issue from the fire district perspective is, we want to be able to access you, whether you have a chemical reaction to something, and we need to go out there and do a public safety efforts, or if there's a fire and we want to go to through your property to get to where the fire is, we want to be able to access that. It's all about access for emergency purposes. And so, at this moment in time, this is the resolution that is in front of you to change the perspective, to see it as a agricultural activity, treat it as such, and then the intent of following up with a meeting to start the discussions on new road standards for ag.
Anita?
Madam Chair, just as a point of housekeeping, I just note that in your agenda packet, you'll see highlighted for the resolution and other agricultural activities, but those words did not make their way onto the agenda for today. So, action would be limited to cannabis cultivation, but certainly, your board can determine by consensus and to bring back next time any action that you might want to consider with regard to extending it to any other activity. But you couldn't take action on anything related to other agricultural activities today.
Right.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, Bruno, thank you for, you know, basically going through everything as we got started. When I got on this, was asked to be on the committee, you know, we were looking to see if we could come up with a path to help outdoor cultivation move forward in consideration of all the requirements of 4290 for the fire departments. And what I liked was some of the general discussion that we got to, that really talked about establishing the road standards for just outdoor cultivation. And I know that it took a while to get there in conversation as far as Cal Fire and the fire departments, because obviously, their number-one goal and ours also is always making sure that our community, our businesses are safe. So, from my point of view, what I would like to do is move forward, just as Anita would said. Talk about special road standards for outdoor cultivation directly, and if Bruno wants to set up another ad hoc committee that talks about developing road standards for any other ag or other things that bring the ag industry into it for future projects, I think that could be done at a later date with a different committee. So, I heard loud and clear from the fire departments that there was a path forward for this new industry through the cultivation of establishing some road standards. Obviously, there are going to be things that need to be done by the new industry to make sure that it'll work for both sides, and that's what I'd like to stay focused on today.
Okay, Supervisor Brown?
The only thing I would disagree with, with you, Moak, is that I think it should be this consistent. I think having two committees come up with two different recommendations, it really should be consistent, I think, because, first of all, it's going to be more committees than you need. I mean, the issue technically is that cannabis isn't ag, but if it's like any other committee, by the time that they're done with their recommendation, it will be. So, I think, I think we need to anticipate.
I guess we're saying the same thing.
Yeah, we need to anticipate that it will be, but we need to have them consistent rather than have two committees.
Well, and that...
Maybe I missed what you were suggesting.
We were in agreement there. I agree.
I thought I heard you say to start another ad hoc committee.
Well, I said if Supervisor Sabatier wants to set up something else as far as that goes with ag. When I joined this, it was looking for outdoor cultivation and how we could move this forward with cooperation of the fire departments, not to bring in the ag conversation, so it would be across the board for any new ag that was happening. That kind of morphed as we had the committee, and
Right.
I had some concerns about that, so I'm bringing it up today. So, I think we're saying the same.
I'm just saying that it should be consistent. No matter what the crop is, if it's a legal crop, then the standards in the development, it should be the same standards, so.
And that's where the, and so, that's where the opportunity for the road standards would make that across, as far as road standards. You've got to have some road standards.
Yeah, and, you know, 4290 is there, but I've seen so many, it's subjective, and it's not specific, and I think the fire, Cal Fire likes it that way, for the most part, because it, you know, puts it on us, but you've got to bring them into it. You know, they like to say, you guys need these rules, you need the fire hazardous vegetation ordinance, you need this, you need that, with that, with very little input, and we're seeing that. And it's not enforceable, as it is right now. And so, I think bringing them in and holding their feet to the fire, what is it exactly you guys want? You're the ones that want the access. Tell us what you want, and we can implement those conditions, so.
Anita, did you want to?
I think the fire districts have been providing parameters for what they're looking for, and access and turnaround seem to be predominant there.
Right.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, they've been asking for making sure that they're able to turn around at the, where the project itself is, not just anywhere in the driveway. They've been looking at a driveway standard versus just no standard. But at this moment in time, I, we didn't want to put anything specific in this ordinance without sitting down with the stakeholders that would be affected by that. But I, just to clarify, I think that Supervisor Brown and Supervisor Simon are slightly saying different things. Supervisor Brown is saying have one ad hoc committee to affect all those under agriculture that are doing agriculture activities. Supervisor Simon is saying have the conversation with cannabis and then have the conversation later on with the rest of the ag. I fear that if we follow Supervisor Simon's idea, that we end up back in the same seat that we're in, where we're treating the same activities differently, depending on what crop you're choosing to grow. And again, to me, the issue that comes up is, if you do 200 acres of hemp, you have no issues, but as soon as you do one acre of cannabis, then you end up getting this roadblock. And I think that that's just, we need to make a more even-field, fair way, an equitable way of treating a similar activity, which is why I want to have a good, healthy conversation about what would be that road standard and how would it affect all the ag? And instead of, again, forcing something and making them do a specific standard, let's first figure out how that's going to affect it. And the idea...
And the idea also, it says that it shall only be considered for new agriculture activities. So anything that is currently in operation would not be affected by the new road standard. It would all be grandfathered, and then it would be recommended that these are the new standards, but any new use permit, or any new activity, any new license, things like that, then you would have to meet those standards, once those standards have been decided upon.
Supervisor Brown?
That's something that the committee can talk about. I don't think, I think we're getting into the weeds-
Right, right, I agree, I agree.
So to speak, here, but what, I'm talking about the whole thing, it's not grandfathered in. You can't grandfather access that's safe. It's either safe or it's not. And that's the whole point of the hazardous vegetation ordinance. We could say, well, those people that got, you know, they're brushed right next to their neighbors, that's their grandfathered in. It's not the case. It's, the whole idea is to make it safer for us to have access. So, when you get, when you start talking about that with the committee, keep that in mind that it's not, it's not grandfathered in. And you could, you don't have to build the road, you just have to keep it clear where they have access, where people can get in and out safely, so.
I agree.
Supervisor Simon?
One other thing too, we're having discussions, especially for, on the fire department side, both CAL FIRE and our local fire districts, is one of the main situations is the commercial, the word "commercial" in there. Once "commercial" goes in there, now it puts them to a different standard. And I know we were talking about maybe addressing that later on, or when we come back next year to look at our cannabis ordinance as we move forward throughout the years here. So, that was a long conversation also, just the word "commercial," that has to be attached to outdoor cultivation.
Mike Lynn, did anybody from your staff want to come up and address any of the questions or concerns? Or can you have any comments?
Introduce yourself for the public.
I'm Jack, I'm the interim chief building official.
Mary Jane Montana, deputy building official. We were both at the meetings with the local fire department and our, the two board members, and some of the issues were, as we said, commercial versus an agricultural activity. And they were okay. 4290 says if, if you've got a structure on there, then you've got to meet certain standards. It would be a driveway standard, or it could be a commercial roadway standard, depending on the type of use. And that would apply to a winery, or an olive mill, that sort of thing, as well as a commercial cannabis greenhouse with drying and those other associated things. The thing that, as Supervisor Sabatier said, is just outdoor cultivation. Do we treat it the same as we treat vineyards, orchards, and other ag activities? And county council found that, and Supervisor Sabatier found that it is an agricultural activity, not agriculture as, for ag exempt sort of reasons, but it is an activity. And this is the way that other jurisdictions throughout the state and throughout the United States are looking at cannabis and cultivation, extraction, and all those other pieces of the business, is, this is a plant, this is extraction, let's look at the issues that go along with the growing, the extraction, and the marketing of it. And treat it as a plant, and then deal with the other issues, whether it be chemicals, ingress, egress, those sort of things that go along with it, not get wrapped up in the idea that it is cannabis. And that seems to be the way that our fire code is going, as well as the nation's other large states, Colorado in particular, that it's pretty well ahead of the curve on this, the way that they're treating this, they're looking at the ramifications. So, I think doing this is a step towards doing that, saying that this is an agricultural activity, we're going to treat all ag activities the same. It'll probably also require a little bit of modification in our building ordinance. Chapter five talks about driveways, in that a 20% slope is allowed, not the 16% that's in 4290, and in fact, up to a 33% slope is allowed. So, it won't be just this modification, we have to look throughout in those other areas, the grading ordinance as well, and we might have to make some changes to that, to make everything consistent.
Supervisor Brown?
So, we can make it more restrictive, we can't make it less?
We can make it appropriate to our own geological, climatical, and that sort of thing.
But if 4290 says 16%?
Yes, so I would, but there are other ways to address steeper slopes. It could be with asphalt, concrete, that sort of thing, that, you know, your, the tires aren't slipping, that sort of thing.
Got it.
There are ways to meet the intent of the code and the same level of protection.
Okay, yeah, I know, and there are things in there that are specific, like, you know, every 400 feet you have to have a turnout and all that, but it's still not, here's what I wanted to, and I didn't realize we were going to have the committee meeting right here, but since we are, this is why I want it to be consistent, that regardless of the crop that's being grown, whether it's considered federally agriculture or not, agriculture has a specific definition, tillage cultivation, farming of any product. Doesn't make, doesn't make any difference what the, what the, you know, the federal or state designation is of it. It's, that's, if you're not growing anything, if you're out there tilling the ground, that's, that could, that's making it fallow for another crop at some other point. So, there's a process that you go through. So, that's why you go through this, this exercise with this committee, say, these are going to be the standards for an operation that has any of, any of the processes in place that meet the definition of agriculture. That's, I think it's very simple. You don't have cannabis, you don't have grapes, you don't have to have any of that stuff involved in it, it's the process of, of the definition, the true definition of agriculture.
Right, and it's defined in the grading ordinance, it's defined in the building ordinance, and a number of other places, and exactly that, you know, and it includes the grazing of animals, all those sorts of things, so.
Right.
This is a significant step towards that, towards leveling that playing field, no pun intended, but, and I think it'll give the, it has put cannabis growers that are planning on doing greenhouses and that sort of thing, on notice that they may have to make improvements that are more substantial than they originally thought, or, you know, outside, that are just doing outside, they, they may have some relief from those standards.
Okay, so would CAL FIRE have to sign off on that? I mean, I'm-
CAL FIRE is just trying-
I'm trying to imagine a scenario, another scenario other than this, where we've said, you know, this is state law, but we're going to, we're going to relax that, based on what we think. And I know we can make it tougher, but I've never, I don't know of a scenario where we 've relaxed it, to where, you know, you can, you can do something-
Well, in the language of 4290 and 1270, which is the section of state code that actually implements it, it says, "or same practical effect." So you can do other things that, when you juggle it around, has the same effect, allows the same access, or same protection. But those words are in there, as well as in the building codes that also implement some of this stuff, meets the intent of the code. So, those are two pieces that we use when things are not, you can't do it exactly the way that the code says, but you're providing the same protection. CAL FIRE, at this time, due to shortages and that sort of thing, has given the inspection and enforcement of 4290 in SRA areas to the county. So, the local LRA's, North Shore Fire has also given inspection, authority, and jurisdiction to the county. Lake County Fire in South County has not, they have two fire protection officers, including, plus their chief, that's interested in dealing with that, so they're, they're doing their own inspections and approvals. Kelseyville Fire, we haven't heard from them as to their level of staffing and that sort of thing, so yeah.
Well, most of theirs is SRA anyway.
Pardon?
Most of Kelseyville's is SRA anyway.
Right. So we are playing a big part in this, when you say, as CAL FIRE signed up, they've signed off to the idea that we're the ones responsible for it, so.
Well, okay, so, I still want them to sign off on it. 30% is steep, 20% is steep, and if CAL FIRE comes in later and say, well, you guys approved this, we can't even get, you know, truck up yet.
No, I'm just saying that that's the way that our-
The whole point of this is access for them, not access for us, not access for the farmer.
Exactly. I'm just saying that right now, I'm not saying that the building ordinance, chapter five of Lake County regulations, says driveways can be 20% or up to 33%. So, that's something that will need to be modified as well. And it's that time of the three-year cycle that we need to update codes anyway, so it's a good time to open up chapter five and make all the changes we need to make in there right now. And that's, that's a process we're going through, but I'm just saying, right now, it's inconsistent with 4290.
Okay.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I just wanted to say two last things here. One, the obvious intent of this resolution is just to treat outdoor cultivation just like any other cultivation, not looking at what the actual product or crop that is being cultivated. That way, everybody gets treated the same, it's easy to understand what rules and regulations you'll have to follow. And the other ones here, it says that the PRC 4290 and 4291 will be subject to the same requirements imposed upon, and the exemptions allowed for any other agricultural activity. So there are certain types of buildings that are allowed on ag that are ag exempt, yes, they need to go through a process in order to be approved, but again, that shouldn't trigger the "commercial" just because you're, you're building a drying shed that doesn't have electrical, or that doesn't have anything that would make it "commercial." Whatever is exempt and allowed to be done without creating the "commercial" on the 4290 for ag, will have the exact same exemptions for, through 4290 for cultivation of outdoor cannabis. Anything above and beyond that, you're going to have to get a "commercial" road in order to meet that. So, this also is just for the license of outdoor cultivation. If you apply for more licenses, all those licenses will be seen as "commercial," and therefore, your road will need to meet the standard of "commercial." So, that's just all through the use permit process and signing off each use permit. Does, do, do some use permits have multiple licenses on there? Or is it each use permit is an individual type of license?
Yes, quite often, multiple permits have multiple license types being applied for.
Okay, and so, just to put it out there, if you have multiple permits, and one of your permits is manufacturing, and one of them is outdoor cultivation, and it's all in the same parcel, you will need to meet commercial standards prior to being, because when you get signed off for that use permit, you don't get signed off for a portion, or this, or that, it's, you're going to have to meet the most strenuous of thresholds to meet what license has the most strenuous of thresholds for standards. So, maybe get different use permits, different strategy needs to be used, but at this point, outdoor cultivation only, no standard at this point in time until further conversations. As soon as you add any other licenses to it, then you will need to meet the commercial standard.
And the one other thing I'd like to bring forward, that this resolution also has a provision that the county fire official and the applicable fire protection district will be involved, or will be invited at least, to any pre-application meeting that the cannabis committee is considering, has to go through before they can apply for their use permit. So they will know early on in the process if they're going to be subject to road standards, or if they're going to be subject to driveway standards. And it gives them the opportunity then to figure that into their business plan, and it also gives an early heads up to the local fire districts of what will be, may be coming together in their area.
Right.
And that's part of this ordinance as well.
And while it's a part of the ordinance and will be in writing, if approved, it's already started this process, I know, through the CDD, so I appreciate that already happening.
Anything further from the board before I open up to public? I will open up to public comment on this item. If you could state your name, and then limit it to three minutes.
A number of weeks ago, there was what was called the airstrip fire at the bottom of Seagull Canyon. And the residents there apparently put the fire out, and one person died. I need to get the official report. They refused help from the fire department, and what I understand from the gossip is that they were making cannabinoid oil.
But that wouldn't, that, we're just looking at cultivation.
I know, and this is what I'm saying, is that pear farmers can grow pears, and it's commercial agriculture. They don't have to build a road into the pear orchard. I'm saying that there is danger in illegal development in agriculture areas where people who are unauthorized without a permit are making these, these products from cannabis. And it did happen, I'll look more into it, but there's a reason for the-
We're talking about cultivation though.
This has nothing to do with what-
What I'm saying is that the CAL FIRE and the fire districts are very sincere in the desire to prevent fires in agricultural areas. This was an agricultural area, thank you, and it was cannabinoid. I just, I'll look into it more, thank you.
Thank you, John.
It wasn't, it wasn't a legal operation, it wasn't even near the area that she's talking about, and just like she said, it's gossip. Part of what she says is true, as, well, that's actually better than usually when she's speaking, but it is partially true.
Okay, thank you.
Michael Green. Quick history lesson, commercial cannabis activity is the broad term, it's the umbrella term going back to 2015, when the first medical marijuana regulations were passed by the legislature. The broad application always gives way to the more specific application. Agriculture is commercial, nonprofit businesses are commercial, so when you drill down to a physical activity that's agricultural in nature, you are not duty bound to say, oh, it's a commercial cannabis activity, therefore, absolutely all commercial standards apply. On the resolution before you today, if it's applying only to the outdoor cultivation, but we know for a fact that all the use permits require outbuildings to be affiliated with that, and the construction of the outbuilding would trigger the commercial requirement, then we've done a big 360 and not accomplished anything. We can't even pop up, what, a 10 by 10 shed or something, without getting a, some type of permit, and if that triggered the application of the commercial standards based on the wording of the resolution, I would say, let's go ahead and broaden it slightly to address outdoor cultivation licensees and any affiliated outbuildings that may be at the outdoor cultivation site itself. And I think that would fall in line with, it's a bigger debate about what an ag exempt building is, but the mere presence of a building in a site plan application does not render it "commercial" by default. There may be an agricultural exemption available to that building. So I'd like you to probably fine tune that, because we've gone a long way on this resolution. I would hate to see a tough shed basically create a situation where you would need to apply a road. To Anita's point on what was put in the brown, the noticing, I think the last paragraph, paragraph seven on the amended resolution should probably be stricken. It seems like there's consensus of the board to bring it back. I think what you're actually trying to ask for is the initiation of a text amendment to develop those comprehensive road standards. I was looking at article 41, and chapter 21 would need to be amended. Mary Jane mentioned chapter five. There's probably several aspects in the zoning ordinance that we'd need to get a peek at. So I would suggest you would bifurcate this issue, go ahead and tweak this resolution to the extent possible, to make sure it applies to outdoor cannabis cultivation and any associated buildings that would go with those. But paragraph seven should be exercised, brought back to you at a different date with a little more clarity as to how those comprehensive standards are going to be enacted. I think it'll be the initiation of a text amendment, I think it'll have to go to the planning commission, you may have to do an initial study on that ordinance. So that's how I would tackle that. Seems like there's consensus to get this done. I don't think you can get that paragraph done today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lance Williams. I appreciate everyone's time at those meetings, um, it was really, uh, very informative, I was, uh, very lucky to be a part of that. I would like this to be put through, again, I tried early activating in April, right now, I'm on hold, uh, I don't even wanna say what month it is now, and, but the real reason is, we need to figure this out, we need to figure these road standards out, and that's what this meeting was about, and everyone in that meeting was about that. And in the end, when it came to making any changes on that amendment, there was no more changes to be made, everyone walked away from that going, "Hey, we're good with this." So, I think that this should happen, and if we can put this thing forward today. One thing that did come up, and it wasn't really the cannabis, it's what I said at the, the, the last Board of Supervisors meeting, I said I could grow hemp without any regulations, and there was more concern with the firemen there about that, and that's what it comes down to right now, Rob Brown saying, and everyone saying that this should be considered all the same, because my point was taken, and that really raised some eyebrows with them, they want an ag standard, and I think the county needs an ag standard. We are an ag crop whether it's hemp or cannabis, so, um, I really do hope that we can attack that, uh, all as one, because again, right now, I think everyone's happy with the standards, uh, as they are, if they're the forty-two ninety driveway standards, the standard standards, but the ag standards we still need and the fire department really, they want that, and I think that's for their own safety, for the county's safety, when they go into a vineyard or pear, and they can get their trucks in, I think we need that. You know, uh, Gallo's my neighbor, and again, most of the roads are good, but again, when they're fighting these fires, they're going into these places and they're kinda using that as their basis. So, uh, again, I would like to say that I would like this to get passed today, uh, and if we need to do another group, that's fine, but I think we don't need to just talk about cannabis, I think it has to be talking about hemp, vineyards, pears, everything. But again, I really appreciate the building department and how they were with it, how Anita really dealt with all the riding up with this, but everyone listened to each other, and in the end, you know, I don't think we need to, you know, go back and do too much more to it, it's, it's done. And again, I would have liked to grow this year, and again, I still don't see, but again, at least everyone's on the same page and we're really close, but again, the main thing with the fire department is that I, as a hemp grower, don't have any standards, and I can just go get a license and do whatever, I can have a thirty percent slope, so, wouldn't stop me. So thank you so much, again, everyone, for all your hard work, and I really appreciate it, 'cause I have been waiting, thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
Richard Durham, cultivator and consultant. So, I say that, uh, if we just took the word "commercial" out of it, we wouldn't even be here today, you know, it could just be recreational cannabis, or just cannabis cultivation. For me to get my permit, um, I had to join two of my properties to make it one, one parcel because I needed a house on, on the parcel that I was growing on. Now, because of this standard, my, because I have a house on it, now I have to have a whole different standard of, of driveway, and ha- hadn't you forced me to join my lots, the grow site would have been on a vacant parcel and everything would be different. So it's ki- it's kinda put me like crazy, I mean, um, so, uh, the valley fire stopped on my property, and it was a fireman who came and stopped it, I'm glad they did, and I, I believe that every property should be accessible by the fire department. But, um, Lake County's topographically challenged, and we would be really, um, putting a lot of property owners, you know, uh, we'd be devaluating their property hugely if we got too strict with these rules. So, um, I don't see that, you know, my intent isn't to have people put in harms way, but at the same time, you know, um, has to make sense, because as far as for me, I, you've put me through so many hoops to get my permit, it's crazy, and you know, when I look back at it now, it's like, we, we just can't be doing this to all the citizens of Lake County, we have to have some common sense rules. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Chris Jennings, cultivator, you know, can we get some kind of direction though, like what it means if you do have a house on your property, 'cause I'm kinda like Richard, you know, I have a large property, there's a house on it, one of the first handful of people just like him, they got approved to do Article seventy-two, the way it was back in the day. Now, like, the way I read it as well is, if you do have a house on your property, you have to meet these commercial standards, and I just, maybe we're just looking too far into it, maybe that wasn't the intent, maybe that's not what we're thinking, but, you know, I'm not gonna pave Jerusalem grade, no offense, from the bridge on for the entire valley, one of the largest valleys in the county, you know, I'd rather just break my house apart, but I'm sure you guys want the house to get taken off the property, 'cause then I'm gonna go ask for the tax collector to reevaluate my property without a house on it, and then the property taxes come down, so, you know, and it's kinda awkward too, 'cause then, then they make you build either a bathroom structure, but you can't use a porta potty, but you have to use your house, and you have to modify your house-
I'm talking about residential.
No, this is part of it though, like, you know, if you have a, a, the way we read this amendment is if you have a structure on your property, more than so many structures, you're considered a commercial, and I think that's what Richard's trying to say is, now that he has a house, has he made a different standard? Since I have a house, do I meet a different standard? Since everyone else has a house, do they meet a different standard?
Marila and Anita chime in here.
Forty-two ninety, the book Resources Code, applies to industrial, commercial, and residential. So, if you have a residence on your property-
There's already a standard.
There's, and Mary Jane is here and could certainly speak with more authority on this, uh, as the county fi- county fire official, but the, uh, the fact that you've got a residence is a separate consideration and it's not related to, to this. The other thing I would, I would just note is, the resolution, and I believe that the supervisors wanted this done purposely, was to give direction to staff to come back with standards, having considered everything, not provide specific standards in advance, just to let their intent and wishes be known.
Okay, so, we're looking at overall site project, 'cause you have a home on your property, that home's not coming into the equation with your commercial operation as non-commercial-
Would that trigger?
Is that gonna trigger something, this is the concern, like, if I'm gonna go like, "Hey, I'm gonna do four acres of outdoor cultivation," and this amendment passes, I think I'm good to go, but then because there's a wellhouse that's a ten-by-ten, so my well's protected, and then there's a home on the property, is that gonna trigger me to come into a different standard, which is gonna be at least fifty, sixty people, because that's fifty, sixty people are Article seventy-two compliant, and I'm pretty sure those people are in the process of, or already have gone through the process of, getting signed off Article seventy-two at one point, like, when they're going through all that. I'm just worried that's gonna trigger that standard, the way this is wrote, and if that's the intention and just preparations so that way we're not stalled again up at the development department with, oh, we're in a stop, what do we need to do, we gotta figure this out, you're gonna take your house off the property, you're gonna build a separate parcel?
Let's let Mary Jane maybe clarify for us.
Okay, um, every building permit that's issued on over one acre is subject to forty-two ninety setbacks and driveway standards. If, um, the house is existing, you're not adding or building a new house, but the only activity new that you're doing is a, a, uh, an exempt shed that's under two hundred square feet and your, your cultivation, um, the forty-two ninety standards would likely not be applied-
Perfect.
Depending on, on the nature of, of what you're doing. I, I can't sit here and say, "No, it's gonna be free and clear and you don't have to worry about it," but, um, fire department sometimes takes this as the opportunity to look at something and make it better. And, and other than roadways, there's other forty-two ninety standards setbacks, um-
They're all easy to obtain, it's the roadways regardless.
You know, um, defensible space, that sort of thing, that, like I said, you're going back to that same, same practical effect intent of the code.
Absolutely.
And, if you're not putting a new house there, if you're not creating a new fire hazard, um, then we would look at that as well. I can't sit here and say, "No, it'll be fine," or, "Yes, you're gonna be there," but the driveway standards apply when it's, um, when that road terminates at your property, it's a driveway, and, um, I don't recall off the top of my head whether it's two or three structures that it serves. So if you're serving five structures, or the road goes past your house to another one, it's a road, it's not a driveway.
Interesting.
Is where things start and the size of the parcels being served, all of those are pieces of the equation, but-
Cool.
Okay.
Awesome, yeah, I was just hoping, like, yeah, it triggers this.
And it wouldn't be paved, by the way, um-
All weather.
Yeah, it's an all-weather surface-
Yeah, number two base rock.
Yeah.
To the point.
Compacted aggregate base rock with appropriate slope.
But it's not the road, so like Jerusalem Valley, for instance, using, for example, even Rock Creek or these other places, they are-
Are we gonna resolve every scenario, every question here, are we gonna move on with the agenda item?
I mean, I think this is an important part of the agenda item, so we're not getting it signed up.
It's not, it's outdoor cultivation.
If I may just clarify, if there's a building in existence already, it's gone through its inspections, it's gone through its, uh, process of meeting standards-
Perhaps, it, it may predate that.
Unless it was illegally built, or-
Well, no, or if it predated, if it was built in nineteen sixty-five or nineteen seventy-two, prior to nineteen ninety-one, forty-two ninety wasn't in effect, so, some of these standards were not in effect at the time it was built. Now, if they're gonna add on to their house and improve their house while they're doing the other-
Well, that's a whole different subject.
That's a whole different story.
Absolutely.
So I said, you can't sit here, like Rob said, and, and determine, uh, the effect on every property in the county that this is gonna have.
When we start getting, "What about this, what if that was that?" We're, we're not getting anything done, that's what the ad hoc committee's supposed to do, resolve that.
And, and I do have a question about, um, the, what's being required for the use permit of outdoor cultivation, the restrooms were brought up. In a typical agricultural activity, vineyards, hemp, whatever, would those be exempt, or would those automatically trigger the commercial?
For hemp, or vineyards, or pears, or walnuts, they just have to go through the, likely the grading permit process, and sometimes they can even be exempt from grading permits. So, uh, restroom facilities would not be required by the community development department, I don't know if the agricultural commissioner may require restroom facilities, but for use permits for cannabis, the planning commission has been requiring restroom facilities one, if one does not exist.
But does that, the, the question is-
That's addressed in the Labor Code anyway.
Um, so, if the restroom triggers a building permit, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Jane, but the forty-two ninety, forty-two ninety-one would apply, correct?
Probably, if it was less than two hundred square feet and we were only dealing with with a plumbing permit, maybe not, but again, it's, you can't sit here and, and address every possibility.
Well, yeah, especially when it's fire-safe regulations applicable to outdoor cannabis cultivation operations, what's on the agenda?
Anything further, Supervisor Sabatier?
I'm done for the moment.
Supervisor Brown?
So, my question is, uh, what happens with the projects until the ad hoc committee comes up with the road standards? If you have a cannabis project going through right now, are we gonna have to wait until the standards are figured out, or are we gonna be able to, like, go now with regular ag, or what happens?
Supervisor Sabatier?
My intent is all ag continues as is until further notice.
Well, it's-
Just like I don't wanna stop new vineyards from coming in, just because we're gonna work on an agricultural road standard, uh, we shouldn't stop.
Forty-two ninety's already in place, so, just follow the standards that are already in law, in law for right now.
So if this resolution is passed, you'll be able to continue?
Yeah, so it'll just be considered ag with no standards until-
There are standards.
Anita.
The resolution just signifies your board intent to direct staff to come back with standards, it doesn't have the force of law and won't change anything other than, it's a formal document explaining your board's reasoning and looking for certain changes.
But it states also that it is an agricultural activity with this resolution, that part is not what staff is coming back with.
No, this, and that's part of your board's intent, that you determine that, and because of that determination, you're directing staff to come back with standards, but it doesn't change anything, as you already pointed out.
Yeah. One more quick thing, Lance Williams, um, talking to the Menocino Department, um, that is just like our department here, they said that the buildings that were already on properties because they had been called ag were exempt unless they were drying or doing other things or manufacturing in those houses. So a house on the property did not by any means make it, uh, non-ag, and I'm hoping, again, this is just kinda freshening, there's a lot of things that are open, that we could do something like that and look at other people's legislation, 'cause it seems like there is a lot of fear there, and I definitely had that fear, and that was something I had brought up, that again, because of Article seventy-two, everyone is forced to have a house, but I think there is ways to do it, and I think that the, the building department is capable of that, and I think you guys are too. And again, I hope we wouldn't put everything on hold as well, 'cause again, then I could be looking at another, who knows, year before I do anything, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? See no movement, I'll bring it back to the board for any more further discussion or offering the resolution.
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer the resolutions.
Resolutions, but-
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
The part that goes to other agriculture should not be part of this again, because it, it doesn't appear clearly on the agenda item. If your board does wanna move forward with cannabis, uh, you can just simply say under Number Seven, "The board directs county staff to develop comprehensive special road standards for outdoor cultivation of cannabis to ensure reasonable access to emergency first responders," and you can certainly move forward with that today.
And, uh, I will just state that the intent is to make that more global, but within the resolution will be as is, um, and so I, um, offer the resolution.
Resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Calhoun?
Aye.
Supervisor Crumble?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Here, yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye. Okay, with that, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and when we come back, we're gonna take up seven point six. I'll read the item. Okay, seven point six, consideration of A, Dr. Erin Gustafson's resignation as a county public health officer, and B, appointment of Dr. Gary Pace, M.D.P., M.P.H., M.C.P. as interim county health officer, and approval of professional services agreement and authorize board of chair to sign. Denise?
This is the Ho, good morning or good afternoon, um, board. Denise Pomrai, Health Services Director, as your board is aware, Dr. Gustafson, our health officer, has accepted another position, um, down in San Bernardino, so she can be closer to family that lives in Southern California, and therefore her resignation is before you to accept. With that, we, or I reached out to Dr. Gary Pace, who has been our interim health officer, um, before, plus we've done some contract work with him for professional services, and he has, um, agreed and acknowledged to, upon your board's approval, um, be our interim health officer while we go through the recruiting process. Dr. Pace apologized to us that he couldn't be here today, he had another professional commitment, um, doing clinical work in Sonoma County today that he couldn't get out of, so.
Is there any questions or comments from Denise? Any questions or comments from the public on this item? Supervisor Sabatier?
I was just wondering about the, uh, what length of time we anticipate to, 'cause I know the, uh, contract goes all the way through the end of the year, um, what kinda time are we expecting for the recruitment?
So the contract goes to the end of the year unless a health officer is appointed, and then-
'Cause there's one extension also that's allowed for the contract.
Right, there's one extension, so, right now, we're doing a local recruitment, it's in progress. When we did a professional recruitment two years ago, it took between four and six months. So we wanted to make sure, especially during fire season, that we have it in the contract that he can, um, stay on, um, but it also says, as soon as a health officer is appointed, it would end.
And to further answer your question, Supervisor Sabatier, um, board interviews of public health officer candidates tentatively scheduled for September seventeenth, depending on the candidate pool.
Wow.
We'll see.
Okay, any further questions? Public, is there any public? See no movement, then I'll bring it back to the board for action, we'll have to take them up one at a time.
Madam Chair, I move to accept Dr. Erin Gustafson's resignation as the county public health officer.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Madam Chair, I move to appoint Dr. Gary Pace, M.D., M.P.H., M.C.P. as interim county health officer with approval of professional services agreement and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
A motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about making you wait. Sorry about making you wait, I didn't realize that last one was gonna take.
But you got to learn a little more about cannabis.
Seven point seven?
Yep, seven point seven. Consideration of an agreement for medical services in the Lake County Detention Facility in California.
Yeah, they did.
We did be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Forensic Medical Group for FY, for fiscal year two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-two.
Hello again, Denise Pomeroy, Health Services Director for the Health Department.
George McKnight, Regional Director of Operations for CFNG.
Captain Norm Taylor with the sheriff's side.
So, your board, we present before you a contract with California Forensic Medical Group, which is the organization that runs the medical, the medical for the inmates out at the jail. This has been a longstanding relationship with CFNG that goes back twenty-plus years. Their contract was up in June, however, CFNG just merged with a company called Wellpath for their administrative oversight. So we had some delays in getting the contract before your board. With that said, we also extended our existing contract, so there was no interruption in services out at the jail. And so we put forward today the new three-year contract with that company, CFNG, California Forensic Medical Group. And I do want to, to just say for the record that it's been really great working with Wellpath and CFNG on this new contract. The contract got a complete revise, it's much more detailed, it really outlines everybody's role and responsibilities. The contract hadn't been updated for, I don't know, since nineteen ninety-five or something, so, really, some time and effort. We've met with the sheriffs and county admin office, and all of us worked collectively to make this a much more detailed contract. In addition to that, CFNG, we asked them to go back to the table and really look and analyze our costs. And with doing that, they agreed to decrease our cap that we are charged from five percent to three percent. So that was, that's gonna be a big cost savings to the county, so it's the rural CPI annually, but it's capped at three percent. So that was a really, that's really good for the county. In addition to that, when we go over our contract based upon the annual average inmate, we increased that from three hundred and five inmates to three hundred and fifteen, at no additional cost to the contract. And our per diem for that was five ninety-one before an increase, so it would have been around six fifty this year, they took that back down to four fifty. So that was, that's gonna show a savings. In addition to that, we increased the amount that CFNG will pay when charged for inmate hospital stays from twenty-two thousand to twenty-five thousand per inmate per episode, and the ADAP per inmate from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand. All of those were really great negotiation efforts between Wellpath and the county, and I appreciate their willingness to relook at the contract and, and give us, you know, a really fresh start.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I just had a couple of questions, it says here, two point seven million, that's for just fiscal year nineteen twenty, correct?
Correct.
And so each year, we'll be reviewing this contract for the annual cost, because I see the contract is for three years, from nineteen to twenty-two.
It automatically renews, for the three years, it will go up the Western Rule in CPI index, but not to exceed three percent.
Gotcha. And when I'm looking through the scope of services, this does not include medications?
It does include medications.
It does include medications?
It includes everything except for psychiatric inpatient. So if there's a psych patient that gets shifted out to an inpatient, it does not cover that because behavioral health covers that within their services. And it includes inpatient services up to the cap of twenty-five thousand dollars, based upon contractual rates.
And then again, for if you do outpatient, if you're out for twenty-four hours, at this point, it becomes, goes through a different entity and not through this contract?
Nope, it's paid by this contract, it's included in the, in the contract cost.
And do we still get the reimbursement from Medi-Cal?
We would, we are going to implement the Medi-Cal inmate claiming program this year, we have not done it in the past, but we are gonna do it this year. In the event we have those really expansive costs that, you know, can happen with an inmate.
Yeah, because I think it starts off as soon as you hit that twenty-four hour mark of being admitted, then at that point, Medi-Cal can come and play.
If they qualify for Medi-Cal, yes, that's true.
Right, which most likely they would, but not all?
Not all.
Okay.
Any further questions?
And it's, yeah, well, I just wanna add to that, because that's a good, really good point, because it's not, it's not the cases that are expensive, it's all of them combined, they're very expensive, even the little ones. So there's a lot of expense going out there that needs to be reimbursed, so, yep.
Any questions or comments from the public on this item? See none?
I don't know if Norm or George want to say anything?
All I'd like to say is, thank Denise and her team from the sheriff's office point of view. CFNG or Wellpath has provided our medical services there at the jail for some time. Having that continuity of service, the same staff that works side-by-side with our officers twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, does make a difference. And being able to work together and resolve issues is, is the key. So each issue that's come up during the time I've been out at the jail, they've been very open to meeting with us, dealing with our issues with short staff, and, and some of the challenges that result in trying to get medical personnel into different housing units and so forth. So it's been great, and so we appreciate your support in, in this contract.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I did have one last question, and this has nothing to do with wanting or not wanting this contract. I don't see a wave of bidding, there's no need to go through a bidding process or to waive the bidding process for a contract like this?
Denise, do you?
We did not go out to bid, there aren't really any competitors at this rate or this level. We have put in the contract in the memo before to request to waive the bidding process. There's only one other agency that I know of, that is not a California agency, like CFNG resides in Monterey, so they are a California agency, and they only have two counties in the state of California, and they don't reside in California. So we can amend that, if we want to add that, is that correct, Anita or Carol?
Any particular reason why it wasn't on this one, if we've used it in the past?
We, I, I think it was just, uh, new staff and oversight, and my oversight, I apologize.
Yeah, it's, it's not a problem, but we probably should add it to be consistent. Yeah, so it's not on the agenda, is there gonna be a problem if we, if we have the board delay approval till the tenth of September in order to add that? We don't have a contract as of the thirty-first of this month.
Then I would suggest that the board move, and you can ratify that decision on the tenth, to waive the formal bidding process as a sole source, and move forward with the contract today.
Sounds good.
I apologize, your board, I, I missed it, so, my fault.
So did I, until just now.
Yeah.
So did agenda review people as well, it's all good.
So if there's nothing further, then Anita, a motion for approval?
Madam Chair, I move to.
Motion for the waiver. I got, so the thirty-first of?
This month, August. Yeah, we had a two-month extension on our old contract, so services could continue while we negotiated with Wellpath, the new, the new company. So no payment has been made at this time, we are waiting for this contract to be approved.
And how long will this contract, what's the language on this one?
Uh, three years.
Twenty-two.
July first through June two, twenty twenty-two.
Okay. There's some, I'll give you a call, there's some issues that I witnessed just this last weekend, that are, are expensive to the sheriff's department as a result of, of medical staff making calls, you know, out of, out of extra precaution, I'm sure, because of lawsuits and all, all kinds of other things. But it's, it's an expense to, to the sheriff's department that may, may or may not be necessary, so I'll call you about that.
Absolutely, I, a lot of these things are.
Supervisor Brown, need to comment on the discussion about that, we're taking a minute to sort it out.
Well, it's, it has to do with the contract, so, that's what, that's my point.
Oh, and that's the only contract?
Yeah, yeah.
So is it something that you wanted to?
No, I'll, I'll talk to, talk to Norm first.
I'm not sure if I had a motion or not. I think I did, but.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, I move to approve the agreement for medical services in Lake County's detention facility with California Forensic Medical Group for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, with a waiver in motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, your board.
Thank you.
We'll take up our seven point four item, consideration of Lake County's priorities for long-term recovery from repeated wildfire disasters. Carol?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To start this discussion, I have a very rough draft spreadsheet. And so Susan, if you would give copies to the board members and Carolyn and Johanna, they just, Carolyn and Johanna just need one. And then put the rest at the podium, in case any member of the public, such as Jessica, the only member of the public here, would like to pick it up, thank you.
We're gonna need more copies.
It's a big crowd out there.
So this probably looks familiar to some of the supervisors who had the largest of the fires in their jurisdictions, because we worked on this in the past, and it's been updated for the purpose of this discussion. And if I could just kind of run through it as a starting point to, to get you thinking, then if, then if we open up the discussion and talk about what's not here, or what should be added, et cetera. And, and I wanna point out that USDA Regional Director Kim Van is assisting me with this. Melinda Mattson of EDA has also reached out and advised that there's a notice of funding opportunity through their agency for economic recovery or resilience. And I'm making those points, that I'm coordinating with those folks, because I don't want us to go to DC and ask for things that are already available. We wanna zero in on what isn't available. And so, just starting at the top, again, you'll see some things that, that you've seen before from the past, when we had the priority list immediately following disasters. But this is fairly updated, and some of this is really thought, so again, a rough draft. So the first thing is homebuyer and reconstruction loan programs that work for our citizens. You're probably aware that there are, are several programs that have been made available to us, Cal Home was one. The current USDA Section five oh two, single-family direct home loan programs is another, there may be others. But they haven't been entirely effective, and the Cal Home one in particular, I believe the maximum amount one could get on a loan was really limited. And so it, the program has had limited success because of that. The single-family direct home loan program, although the, there have been something like thirty-five people that have been successfully purchased homes through that program, there are some limits that have disqualified people, credit ratings, income levels seem to be prohibitive, so not a lot of our citizens are qualifying for those. Next, on the housing topic, we're recommending that, that we advocate for more housing vouchers in the Section eight program for Lake County. We've lost a tremendous amount of housing stock in, since these fires began in two thousand fifteen, whereas our number of housing vouchers that we have has been the same for as long as anybody can remember. We have, I believe it's two hundred and twenty-four vouchers. HUD has informally advised staff that a break-even point, a minimum break-even point in that program is somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred vouchers. During the years I administered that program, although we requested a time or two more vouchers, we were never successful, and in fact, told not to request because there was no new money. But I believe that may have changed, I've heard tale that some jurisdictions have qualified for more vouchers. So I'm suggesting that we address housing on all fronts, not just for homeowners and buyers and rebuilders, but also renters. Next up is apartment and rental housing. It's been quite a long time since I remember any development of apartment-type housing in the county. There's one facility being built right now in the city of Lakeport, but there isn't much activity.
Kelseyville, they got a big one going in right now.
Okay.
Fifty units or something.
I guess I didn't know that one, but anyway, we're.
We're working on one in South County, too.
Is it under construction yet?
Under construction.
Okay. So, and perhaps then this is not needed, but, but the thought was more incentives to get developers to come here and build. Another one that is specific for workforce housing development, as you know, this staffing shortage has, shortage has made it difficult, certainly for the county as an employer, but probably all employers that are looking to bring people in from the outside, because it's very difficult to find housing here in Lake County. We're proposing that we advocate for grant funds to harden homes, to, so in other words, to assist homeowners in home development, rebuilding, reconstruction with fire-resistant materials, or upgrading existing homes to ensure they are more fire-resistant. This next one will look familiar to you, we've asked for this a number of times, a vocational training program to support contractor rebuild effort. As you know, one of our concerns through recovery has been that many of our contractor resources are now working in some of the neighboring counties where they can make more money per square foot, and it has slowed our rebuilding effort. And so the concept here was possibly for the counties of Lake and Mendocino to essentially co-host a training program of this nature. The idea being that if local, non-contractor citizens could be trained up to support contractors, that perhaps we could do a better job of keeping local contractors here working in the county, because we'd have a pool of trained apprentice-type folks that could support their work. I'm told that Senator McGuire was able to secure five hundred thousand dollars that was appropriated to Mendocino College for that, for a purpose of this type, or maybe it was more than five hundred anyway, recently I heard that, but, but we have yet to hear of any plans to actually operationalize that program. So that one may be coming. Another one date, that dates back to the earlier years of our fires, emergency access, ingress and egress. Out of a lot of our really remote rural communities, there are still a lot of concerns about how people get in and out, how firefighters and emergency personnel get in and out to fight fires in those areas, so that one is on the list from the past.
I'd like to pause on that, just to ask if it fits within that category. But I was just talking to Supervisor Crandall about Sulfur Bank Road, where half of the road, well, not half the road, in portions of the road, half of the road has eroded and fallen off, and it's a single lane. And during the sulfur fire, had that been started a little bit more, I guess, south of where it started, people would have gone out Sulfur Bank Road rather than out Lakeshore, and then Olympic. And you know, like I do when there's a fire, you got those coming in who wanna see what's going on, including firefighters and law enforcement, and you have those trying to flee and get out. When you have a single-lane road and a buckling road infrastructure, I think that road right there is critical to that peninsula to make sure that there's a safe way to get out from Winflower Point, Monitor Point, all those areas that would be stuck on two, two different roads to choose from. If one is not accessible, they would have to use the other.
Can, can we come?
Do you wanna talk about each one, or?
No, I'd like to get, get through them, because I'm making notes on them, and then we could come back to that, because I, I had a note about that.
Yeah, and I, and I will say that in.
In general, not specific to that.
In general, we didn't have a lot of success with getting road funds.
Right.
Where you're on in the disasters, but.
Yeah, there's a re, there's, I mean, I'll, I'll have a question about that, too, maybe.
So next up, this one might actually surprise you, we, we plopped the dredging of Lucerne Harbor on this list as a possibility. At least for perhaps possible partial participation in the funding for that project, and the reason being that the increased sedimentation that's, that's going into Clear Lake as a result of the erosion from all the wildfires is impacting the viability of our boat-launching programs. So we're suggesting that, that your board may wanna consider that in there, and I'm not suggesting that it result in some long delay of the project, but why not take that as a discussion point to DC? Next up, restoring stormwater runoff, protection capacity, culverts, roads, repair systems. As you know, in the, in the middle of all these wildfires, we've had two pretty severe rainy seasons. Both in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, we had atmospheric river disasters. There are a lot of concerns here about watershed protection and how it impacts recovery. So we're suggesting fine-tuning and ask in that regard, and as I think about Supervisor Crandall's project around Potter Valley, perhaps funds even to, in, in support of the county's priorities for, for that area, because we're, you know. even to, in, in support of the county's priorities for, for that area, because we're, you know, Supervisor Crandall was certainly moved by the need to retain Lake Pillsbury for future wildfire fighting for both Lake and Mendocino Counties. The last one, and again, rough draft, very open to all your ideas. The last one is, it ties into the goals and priorities of the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, and that one is based on the hope of developing fire research and science epicenter here in Lake County. Given our repeated disasters, Lake County is in a good spot to, you know, be the central point for studying this phenomenon, developing solutions. So a little bit like the Blue Ribbon Commission for Clear Lake, we'd like to see that sort of emphasis given to Lake County as unfortunately the wildfire capital of California. So those are some preliminary thoughts in how these things ended up on the list, and I'd love to hear from the board. Thank you.
Who would like to start? Supervisor Brown?
I will. So there's, you know, there's a lot of things on here that we're asking for, there's a lot of things on here that we have asked for, and I think we need to face the reality that it's a, it's a, it's a list that's admirable, but we're not going to get it. So I think we need to narrow it down and focus on things that we really need to do. You know, I know Tina hadn't, hasn't been much involved in the recovery in the, of the fires and all that. So, you know, glad that we're having this, because I think, you know, last year, we went, we've heard no results as far as that visit. So I want to know, you know, what, if anything, that we could follow up with on that. But, you know, there's, these are, again, these are all good asks, but they're not, they're not realistic. And I think we ask for things that we can really get, and we're going to probably get somewhere. And I'll just start with the beginning. You talked about the Cal Home program. That was, that was a state program. And how much money's left?
Right now, I was just pulling that up. So we just did the second drug, working on the third, about 3.7 million. So we have about 886,000 that has been requested and approved for construction, and we are kind of hitting our stride. We are, we are moving along.
But it's running out of time.
We have till January. We are working on that at this time.
Okay. And that's the thing, we need, there's some things that we need to go with the state, and that's one of them, that we need to ask them to increase that to $100,000 to, from the 60 and the, and the 80.
We have written a letter at this point. I know we're going to look at doing some more meetings, but.
I went to Sacramento, and I asked for that. We need to continue, continue doing that. Because it doesn't do any good to ask for more money if we can't get rid of the money that we have, and we're going to just end up giving it back. So that's, that's one thing. How many vouchers, go, I'm just going on to the next thing. How many vouchers have we gotten rid of for the Section 8?
Gotten rid of?
Yeah, how many do we get, how many do we use?
We use them all, and it's about 224. That it's been stable, the same number for 20 years.
Okay, and your, and your thought is that if we had more of those, that we would use those as well?
Yes, that we would have more citizens making use of those.
And that's all federal vouchers, that's not any state, okay. Apartment rental housing incentives for developers to build. You know, we can, we can ask for that, but, you know, the bottom line is there has to be money in it for the developers, and we don't build houses, we don't develop houses. So I would be interested in hearing what the developers think that we need rather than what we think they need. So we, we have to identify from them.
If you don't mind, it also makes a difference on what type of housing is being built.
It does.
If they do low-income housing, the state has all kinds of funds for that, but as soon as you ask for anything that's moderate housing.
Yeah.
That's when it doesn't meet the threshold of any kind of profit.
For that, but I have other suggestions about that, because that's where our real need is.
Moderate.
Yeah, yeah. And we have housing stock, we have, we have inventory available for that, but there's some issues, and I'll bring that, bring that up in a little bit. So I don't think, you know, asking, going and asking to Washington DC and asking for incentives for developers to build is going to be useful unless the developers have some input on that as well. North Coast Builders Exchange, RCRC, or not RCRC.
RCH.
Yeah, RCHDC. And, and, you know, some of the developers that are actually developing in Lake County right now, should talk to them, say, what do you guys, you know, what, what's the issue that you would have right now that could be resolved in order for, to get you to do other development in the county? So workforce, housing development. We need workforce. They're not going to, you know, the housing is not going to bring them to Lake County. The money for the jobs is going to bring them to Lake County. You know, we have a workforce here, we have, you know, but they're, you gotta be able to pass a drug test, you know, not find a house, you know, talk to, you know, somebody like, you know, Conocti Harbor, those guys, how, what the turnover they have with people. It's because the workforce, even though they're, you know, they're, people live here, they're not employable. That's not the problem. That, the housing is not the issue, it's the, it's the people. So we have a problem with that. We have a problem with that with county, with trying to, you know, get county employees, because, you know, people don't want to follow up. I've seen people walk in here and just basically throw the application, you know, call me when you can, you know. They're not really, you know, we need the workforce training, how to fill out an application, how to do all that kind of stuff. The housing, that'll, that'll come, but, you know, we, we don't need to build it for them. Grant funds to harden homes. Again, you know, we have money available through other programs that's not being used, and so why is that? You know, what's, what are the developers actually doing? You know, I've had people that were building in the, in the valley fire who went through it, and they're building their house, yet they chose to have, you know, a certain type of tile as opposed to hardening the outside of their home. So, you know, people, people have to prioritize what they want, what's important to them when they're building their home, not for us to say, you know, you go ahead and do whatever you want inside your house, and we'll worry about taking care of the rest of it. You know, some of that has to be resolved by, by the property owner. Again, if the feds come in and say, yeah, we've got all this money available for hardening home, they're not going to. So I don't even know why we're asking.
And you're right that we have other programs.
Well, this is a draft.
What's that?
It's a draft.
No, I get it.
Yeah.
Then that's where, that's where we're having the conversation. So I'm, I'm, my draft would eliminate it, so.
These are things that, you know, that, yeah, just out of your consideration.
And then vocational training program to support contractor rebuild. We could do that, but we need to engage those that would actually do the training, like Mendo.
Just to remind you, we approved vocational training from Mendo in our jail for construction degrees. Mendo has a construction degree. Every high school receives a piece of paper in like April or May for a free, like, eight, 10, 12-week workshop to teach them construction. And some of those students end up getting jobs in construction. So there's already those things happening. We need to make sure we have the conversations with them rather than try to bring something new into the fore.
And again, what I would, what I would ask is that we get involved with Brock Falkenberg on that, on that particular thing. What do you, what does he need? Because.
And would it be helpful to, like, do them one at a time, so that, so that we could hear from, like, gather consensus about whether we're pulling it or keeping it?
That's whatever you want.
Would that be helpful?
Okay, so then, okay, let me get to the, the bottom line, and then we can, we can do that, if you want. None of this makes any difference at all if we don't have infrastructure. Talked about that road over there. That's, that's the kind of stuff we need to be going after. Public infrastructure, not, not, you know, free stuff for individual homeowners. We need, if you're going to be talking to the USDA, now's the, there's never been a better time than, than now to talk to the USDA about putting sewer, about finishing the loop that we've talked about with the Basin 2000. You guys know what the Basin 2000 is and all that, and what does. It's the loop that went around the, the north shore that, that brought the sewer system up to the geysers and.
Oh, the full circle thing.
Yeah, so the full circle part of it is coming around Conocti through Soda Bay, hooking in Kelseyville, and then putting sewer in all of these properties that we already have available that are not sewered, in the Riviera's. You've got a lot of lots up there that are not developable unless they're going to put in an engineered system, and that would resolve a lot of our housing issues. I can remember while the valley fire was still going, some of the roads were still closed off. We had everybody in the room, and I, I said, now's the time, we need to consolidate all of these water systems. Before, we couldn't done it. The day before the valley fire, you couldn't have done it. Now we can. We need to consolidate all those. That's how it happened. I went, we tried to get the Anderson Springs Sewer voted on 15 years ago. The folks said, no, we're not going to do it. Right after the valley fire, I said, Mark Dillinger was here, Jan was here, I said, right now is the time we need to do that. We did it. And so I'm saying, right now is also the time we need to do the infrastructure for these roads. Rose Anderson Road, you know, up there to Socrates Mine Road. We tried to get hazard mitigation funds for that that they had available. They didn't see it as hazard mitigation. I can't even imagine what would be a better example for hazard mitigation than that. Sulfur Creek Road, any of these roads, the Riviera's, there's a ton of them up there that are one-way in, one-way out, that if they were to be designed and submitted for application today, those subdivisions would never be allowed because of the conditions of the road. So we should ask for that. Infrastructure is the, is the thing that we should ask for more than anything else instead of anything else, because none of this stuff makes any difference if we don't have infrastructure for roads, sewer, and water.
Supervisor Spatier?
Other than that, I'm okay with it.
So I don't disagree. I think that infrastructure is the foundation of any kind of future development, economic development, whatever it is that comes in the future. One thing that I know is a personal concern for me is when fighting future fires. We get a call from Santa Rosa, we get a call from Solano County, and that's where their planes come from. Granted, it doesn't take a great amount of time, but when they have to leave to refill, they leave to refill. I would like us to look at the FFA, FAA, FAA, sorry, not what you're doing this weekend, at the FAA to help us get a better, longer runway so we can have Cal Fire landing here in Lake County versus leaving the county while we're on fire. There's nothing worse than seeing planes disappear in the horizon while we're still on fire. And if we can enhance our airport, there's economic development that's also attached to that, that is further than just using it for fire purposes. Now we can get FedEx, we can get UPS to land there, we can start building an industrial complex around there. I think that, that, since we are approaching at a federal level, an agency to help us out, I think we need to look at what federal programs we can tap into, and I think that the FAA is one of those programs we should be looking at.
Perfect for.
Yeah, it's a good, good, good suggestion. And that's part of our infrastructure, so that's, yeah.
Anything further, Brenner?
And I, I don't disagree with the majority of what Supervisor Brown said. I think that we have a lot of programs that are underutilized when it comes to personal ownership of housing, what's available. I've been to some of these housing fairs with Jeff Lucas and Andy Lucas, and there's a lot of opportunities out there. And unfortunately, not everybody knows that they can take advantage, or some people are still nervous about taking advantage, not understanding what the actual results might be. So I think we need to just keep pushing those programs. I definitely would love to see any kind of incentive for moderate housing to be built, because if you're building at 300, 400, 500 square feet, $500 a square foot, what are we going to sell houses here for once they're built? There's no way they're going to make a profit margin off that. Our, our real estate does not have that same value than if you can build it at 400, 500 square feet, dollars a square foot over in Sonoma County or somewhere else. And we need to figure out how to bridge that gap. And I think that, that would be the only question I would ask from the federal government for housing, is how do we bridge that gap? And again, talking to the developers, I'm sure that's what they would say, because I've talked to a couple of developers, and I'm working on some stuff, but they may have some other insights that we might not have. I think that the, yeah, I think the vocational training, we can work with what we already have and try to enhance those programs. I think both Woodland Community College and Mendocino College are doing a great job of offering trade school classes. That's one of the fortes of having the college here in our community, is they offer quite a lot. And one of them happens to be construction. But I don't think we should just narrow it down to just construction. I think it should always be narrowed down to what is an employable trade in this county, and that's what those colleges are doing. The dredging of Lucerne Harbor, I know that we have the potential to get that done with the funds that we have currently in our budget. And so being more specific on what we're asking, rather than having a laundry list, I think we're more likely to get a whole lot chopped off of our long list versus chopped off from a short list. And especially if it's specific to different agencies from the federal government. And I think I'm done. And the fire research.
No, 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 you said you were done.
Could we, you know, that's always a lie. For the fire research, I'd like to believe that we are going to take certain steps to decrease the possibility of fire, so maybe volcanic research, because we're always going to have a volcano. We're always going to have a lake. So if we can have those types of studies versus something that we're studying to anticipate tragedy in the future, that's just like a self-fulfilling prophecy. I'd rather not push for that.
Were you joking about volcanic research?
No, we have, we have a beautiful volcano. We should be researching and, and bringing universities here to do research.
But is there a tie-in to disaster recovery?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you. I just wondering if this, this list or a different list.
Other than if it goes, there's going to be a fire.
Thank you. Well, yeah, you could say.
There's a lot to rebuild, too. Let me know how that works.
Supervisor Brown?
I did have one, one, one other thing. So when we do narrow this down, and I, and I'm not trying to beat up on the draft, I mean, I, I get it, we always have to have these drafts, but I think we need to be, like, we have a short list, it's realistic. And I honestly believe that that, if we were to get one thing, and that would be the infrastructure for, well, two things. One, for our roads, to get these things adequate for ingress and egress. And then infrastructure along that corridor where there are probably, probably 15,000 properties in about, maybe, you know, over a third of them are not developed, and get them all on sewer and water that will clean our lake, that will, you know, that will resolve a lot of our development issues. And, and then along with that, with the water system, you know, with that whole infrastructure that will tie into some of our other needs for water and some of the other areas that we're trying to develop. You know where I'm going with that. I think that would accomplish more than, than all of these things combined, even if they were approved. Because then you got this big giant bureaucracy trying to dole out money individually and all that. And I know there's a place for that, but let's go for the broader, wider application that we can, that we can, you know, benefit a lot of properties and a lot of people. I think that would do it. You're, get that infrastructure in, you can have development, that creates the jobs for the building. That creates a, a housing inventory that brings the houses down to be affordable. There's, there's just a lot of things that would benefit from that. And then the other thing I would, I would suggest, and I was, I talked to Mike Thompson's staff last night about this, and they haven't been brought into the loop. And I, I know they're, they probably will, but I think they should right away, because maybe they're already working on some of these things that, that, you know, they haven't, they haven't been approached on it, they were kind of surprised at that.
And actually, if I could tag on.
The beginning of the discussion.
If I could tag on to that, I agree that this should not just be a list we send with both Chair Scott and, and you, Carol, to Washington DC. This should be something we send to our representatives, the state representatives at the federal government, and then you have your conversation with the group you're meeting with over in Washington DC. The more we put this out there, the more likely we are to receive some kind of benefit from it.
Yeah, absolutely agreed. And, and I, I would envision this become a working document that we continue to refer to over the next couple of years. A clarifying question for Supervisor Brown on the infrastructure, and we can certainly redraft a provision that, that moves that in. I can work with the department heads that, that work in those areas to come up with the right language for that. But are you willing to allow us to toss broadband into that?
Oh, yeah, no, definitely.
Because we're talking about infrastructure, that's, there's another need there.
Yeah, and, okay, so that's actually a, a good point, because those, those three things, if we were to go at the infrastructure, that's, that's beneficial to the entire public and not just individually. Broadband.
Water, sewer.
Water, sewer, and roads. And I know, I know the rest of the board hasn't been involved in this, but I think you have been enough to know. Bring Jan in, she can already show you the plans for the sewer. It's already done. Mark already did it. We had, we had a USDA application in a few years before the valley fire, and they're like, yeah, sorry, we wish we could help. It's a good project, but we can't really do it right now. That was then, this is now. I think, you know, we may have missed our opportunity, but maybe we should have done this a couple of years ago, because they, we garnered their sympathy and we get, you know, some help. But Jan already has all that stuff ready to go. The roads, those road issues right now, a guarantee of Russ Scott in, he would say, The roads, those road issues right now, I guarantee if Russ Scott in, he would say, this road here is ready to go. They've got plans for roads, contingency plans on being able to do it. We, we had to have those when we submitted the applications to the state for the hazard mitigation funds that were denied. But I think, if we keep hammering those, we're ready to go. We've got, we've got projects that are ready to go right now, that maybe have to, you know, freshen up the environmental or something like that, but, but they are ready to go, all the numbers are, are in, so.
Okay. Anything further?
I agree on the infrastructure.
Infrastructure is, is very important, looking at our airport, since we're going to the federal government, I think that's important. One email that came across my desk for this topic is, I have a couple constituents asking, and I didn't, didn't have the answers, but they have it here. Tree removal, there's so many dead trees around the county, is there already something in place to help?
We probably had one of those in the past, earlier on in recovery, and it, it really got no attention at all. It's, it's, there's the gamut of tree issues, and so it was not just about, well, I don't know, let me just throw out some of the concerns. First of all, virtually every way you come and go in, in and out of Lake County, you see burn scarves, so there was that. How is that hurting our economic vitality? Because, you know, people don't want to come here, it's, you see burn scar coming in and out. But also, there were a million and one issues in the earlier stages of recovery around tree issues on private property. Neither of those asks ever really got any attention at all, as Moke and Rob will probably recall, because we were asking for funds like that, and it just wasn't doable on private property.
It was such an emotional thing for people, the same people that were screaming and wrapping themselves around a tree that maybe had a little green at the top of it, now want them down. We had the opportunity to do it with, when, when it was declared an emergency and, you know, early on with the fire, and a lot of folks didn't want it done, now they do. Because Greg Juisty told us over and over and over again, there's only one thing left that these trees have to do, and that's to come down. And everybody wanted to give them a chance, and I get that, but we lost our chance to get any funding. The state and, and the feds haven't, haven't really shown us much serious consideration on that, because it's on private property.
That's right.
There was money available through, through Calpine, and we tried to give that away, and.
They had like a $25,000 grant program, didn't they?
It was, even more than that, and just, it didn't.
For help with trees on private property?
Yeah.
I still think it's an important issue, though, you, you just don't let it go, you know. Prime example, in, in South County, obviously, and, yeah, the sensitivity of the trees with the 175 widening project. It was opened up again as they were doing that project down there in, in my district, and, but it is something that needs to be done. Prime example, looking good on an opportunity down there, there's the Bramble, the new golf course that's going in on the glider port. He went in there and cleared all the trees, got them all cut down, it looks really nice, and, and it stands out as you're driving through. So at least the request still, I, I think we do attempt at least to have the conversation, you know, just don't give up on it. I understand the infrastructure number one, but bringing it back up with any federal programs would be a good opportunity. And I think one thing we have different now is we have the Risk Reduction Authority that we have set up, and maybe we could funnel it through there to the projects, to work with private property owners and with public property. So that's something also that we didn't have in place, that we're looking to do, so at least maybe have a conversation. I know it's a small thing, but it, it, it is big, we're constantly called, you know, they're falling down all over the cemetery in Middletown with some property owners over there that we're trying to work with, so there's many different issues. And it is small, but I think it does, you know, it's an impact when people are coming in.
I have a suggestion on that, if maybe we could consider, because Corinne Woodard is working on that through USDA. Maybe she's got some programs already in place, and maybe we can expand on those. So I would, I would talk to her first, because I agree, it is an issue, but it's not, you know, based on the experience that we've had when we were getting a lot of consideration for funding and all that, that was very low on the list, they weren't even, they weren't talking about it. And a lot of it had to do with the fact that it was, it was on private property. And, you know, you, it sounds good to get money to cut down trees until you realize that each one of those trees gets into the thousands when you're, when the government's doing it. If people want to take them down themselves, they want to hire somebody up there to do it, that's fine, you know, that can be, that can be done really, really reasonable. But as soon as we get involved with it, you're looking at $10,000, $20,000 for, for a tree. Money goes quick, and you got one guy's yard cleaned, and that was, that was the problem we were running into.
Does it set up the prevailing wave, that's why?
And so I, but I think I'm hearing, come up with some kind of ask around trees, and, and what I'm guessing you may want staff to do is come back to you in September with a more finalized draft based on this discussion.
Yeah.
And then it will become our working document as well, not just for this trip.
What I would, what I would like to see us do include in that, and maybe instead of, because I think it's a higher priority, is to take down the trees that haven't burned that are dead, the beetle kill stuff, you know, because that's fuel, it's going to start another fire. The, the trees up there are at risk because they're going to fall, they're not going to burn. They got, they're like, they're like a one-hour fire rating, they're not going to, they're not combustible, you know, they're, they look bad, and that's what they're going to consider, they're going to consider, is it a hazard? It's not a hazard for fire, it's not.
They won't care about aesthetics either.
No, but the beetle kill is, and I think there's been money set aside by, by the governor. We haven't seen any of it, but there was a big announcement about it, and I think we should go after some of that, too, but that's a separate issue altogether. But the beetle kill stuff, there's still a ton, there's thousands, hundreds of thousands of those trees around in areas that need to be addressed that could, could be fuel for, for the next wildfire.
And I think that program's already out there existing through Corinne's program. I know Corinne Woodard, that, that program is already ongoing for private landowners and other stuff, as far as the beetle kill stuff. So like we were talking about, is stuff that isn't any funding out there. So anyway, never hurts to have a conversation, especially since you're back there. So I, I agree completely with infrastructure, that we talked about being the top of the line for, for Lake County and Ask. And if we can get that, I think we've made some big strides, but we had the opportunity to have the conversation.
So when we're done with your comments and public comments, I would appreciate if we could kind of loop back around so I make sure I'm understanding what the next draft should look like, if that can help me.
With that, I'll open up to the public, is there any public comments on this item?
Jessica Pisca from Coberry Council. This has been something that we've been working together on for years, and I actually have the same notes, Carol and Supervisor Brown. For the housing, I, I was actually talking with Fiona Ma a couple weeks ago, and she said something from the state is, they're trying to develop a program for moderate housing development with tax exemption. So hopefully that will come down, and I know there's talk at the federal level, too, about that. So put that on the list. I think another part of the housing thing is getting serious about strategizing and studying how we can have affordable housing built here. I think we really need to just investigate more and figure out, you know, what kind of, there's a million types of modular housing, so many different options all around the different counties that I've been looking at, and, and we need to figure out what will work best for us. I think the days of one contractor building one stick-built house for spec at a time, those days are gone. I don't think that's going to rebuild our, our stock fast enough. So just putting some emphasis on the research part. Infrastructure, totally agree with that. The roads and access, high-speed internet, the water upgrades, we're having in Cobb a big water upgrade this year, this next summer. Most of it's going to be happening. But I know there's a lot of places around the county where consolidation of some of the smaller water districts and upgrade of that infrastructure, and the sewer, and while you're at it, underground power, so that we can maybe not have these situations where we have fires and shut-offs. I also have trees on the list, maybe some funds for code enforcement to help with trees. And also, there is still a lot of garbage, four years after the fire. Supervisor Brown and I have talked about this so many times. I have burned, rusted gates and fences all over my neighborhood, even an abandoned car that is still there. So funds for cleaning up. You have, you set the table and you invite the developers, but you have to clean. You have to have a clean house, and you have to have the infrastructure for development. And then economic development. I think we need to have some kind of strategic planning on how to go into a town that's been decimated like Cobb has, and look at the assets that remain and figure out a long-term economic development plan with what is actually still there. So that's, those are my thoughts. I reached out to Melissa Reeves with Catholic Charities, and her comments are more, well, I'll read them to you. And I, I think they could work really well with Risk Reduction Authority. So resources that would be helpful to Lake County are community foundations set up, better communication from EOC to the VOAD and long-term recovery groups prior to the lack being set up. And from Washington DC, funding would be for the following: food bank reserves, training and preparedness for counties, monies to run a VOAD, communication equipment for counties, monies to house volunteer and equipment warehouse space. More importantly, from Washington DC, there needs to be better FEMA and state funding. For California, the low-income range should be based on average, medium income, rather than federal poverty level guidelines. The FPL does not work for California, as so many do not qualify for these programs they offer, such as the Cal Home Loan. Also, FEMA should be creating a federal wildlife insurance program, much like the federal flood insurance program, to lessen recovery needs at time, which in turn costs less to recover from a wildfire disaster.
Thank you.
Those are my thoughts.
Do you have that in writing, or maybe you could just email that to me as well?
Yeah, I'll send both of them to you.
Okay, so.
I agree, one more.
Joan Moss, I have some ideas I'd like to share with you, thank you for giving me a chance. First of all, I think we should look at what we already have. I believe that Habitat for Humanity is a federal program, and they need volunteers. I think there should be some kind of networking with the colleges and the high school. The students who get their contractor's license at Upper Lake High School could be putting in community service hours, building houses, actual houses, through the federal program Habitat for Humanity. I think the idea of infrastructure with sewer and water is good. If we could order more water, I believe we need to work on water conservation and gather what we do get during the winter so we could use it during periods of drought. I don't think we can just build more houses and invite more business without conserving the water that already comes. We can't order more water. I think we should look at the Hazard Mitigation Report and look at what the federal government okayed and what it didn't okay and why it didn't okay it or it did okay it. So I think there needs to be more networking and communication among the people that are already here. I also believe that the trees are very, very important. I drive to a job every, every week, and I go through hills of burned trees. And I had women ask me about the huge trees that were sacrificed for the infrastructure going from Anderson Springs to Middletown. It was so sad, it almost made you cry. They, these huge trees, they were living, and they were sacrificed for whatever it was, the sewer, the water, and they're no longer there. So that is very sad. And I believe that we got a report from the Lake County Conservancy Group, and they said they had 1,000 trees left to plant. Not just destroy the trees that are beetle-ridden or burned, but if there's 1,000 trees that are given, being given away to people to plant, let's get them planted. I believe that we have good school districts, we have a good Lake County Office of Education, we have a lot of good volunteers in Lake County. And somehow they need to be coordinated and networked, and there needs to be communications. Because I know that Habitat for Humanity has a great deal of money, and what they lack is volunteers. It could be coordinated through the Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. You know, another thought that came to mind, I don't know how we would put this with wild fire recovery, but one issue that I'm seeing in both Findlay and the Scotts Valley area is the flooding that's happening because our stream beds are, are full of debris and, you know, haven't been taken care of. I don't know if that's, could be an ask, we can somehow loop that in? Because I know, I know you have issues, too, with your stream beds.
Definitely, that, that is a great point, Tina, to talk about, because I know affected every year is, obviously Hidden Valley, it has more than one issue, but the gravel and everything building up the sandbars and the creeks and the trees and everything. I, I know that's probably a fishing game, or, it definitely is, you know, something, maybe we can get some, an ask down there or the right direction to go from the feds to the state, but that would be a big help and an opportunity for us.
Yeah, because I think we're seeing more water on our streams, because there's nothing holding the water up on our hills anymore, and I think we're seeing more flooding because of that, so.
Yeah, I think that could definitely be woven into what we've already gone on there about some of the water issues. So could I just kind of regroup and hear what, say what I think I've heard, and, and then we can come back with, with another draft? So first of all, it sounds like we're not asking for what is presently in position one on the list, because there are some programs that exist. We are asking for Section 8 vouchers, that's a tangible thing for which I think there is funding now, there was not in years past. We'll reach out to local developers and the North Coast Builders Exchange to see what they say about incentives for developers to build apartment housing. And depending on how that conversation goes, we may improve upon that request or delete it, we'll see how that goes. It sounds like grant funds for home hardening and fire-resistant landscaping is something we're not asking for. Did I get that right or wrong?
That was just my impression, that, that's probably something, I, I think we need to pare the list down to something reasonable and manageable that we can.
So infrastructure is going to be the priority, I, I get that, I was just kind of going through what we, what we had on here, and in fact, we can put infrastructure at the top. I'll draft something based on your discussion, and after following up with Jan Koppinger and Scott DeLeon as well. So that'll be at the top. Vocational training will follow up with Mendocino College and find out what the plans are for the funds they've been given.
And then I know that they've talked about some of this in Workforce Alliance as well, so.
And Woodland Community College as well.
Okay, so emergency access, I think, could be looped into infrastructure, because it's probably about improving roads or adding roads where they are not. The, there's, and there's dredging of Lucerne Harbor and restoring stormwater runoff. I would suggest we meld that into one, that has something to do with watersheds, runoff, stream beds, and all the related issues there to the fact that these disasters have resulted in the, you know, water coming down out of the burn scars in, in unusual ways.
Yeah, leave the project open, don't just put that one.
And so then I, I'm not sure where you stand with the last one, and it's not the last one in terms of what's been discussed today, but the last one on the list at present, fire research and science epicenter, keep or dump?
Yeah, I, I say keep it, yes.
I think it's a separate, separate ask for something else, I don't, it's not going to happen, I mean, that's not going to happen under this. I get this thing, if you don't, you don't, if you don't ask, you can't tell you no, I get that. But it's also, you know, a function of, let's go in there and get something that we can really get a hold of that will benefit us.
And having a potent list that gets that.
I think that'd be awesome if we could do that, it's not going to happen.
I agree with what, I, I agree with what I just heard Chair Scott say, with the New Paradigm College, with our community colleges, with other levels of education, we can all come together and say, hey, how do we try and access the kinds of opportunities to bring in some kind of fire, fire research and science epicenter here in Lake County?
We can support their requests.
I think that's what New Paradigm is, is kind of going after, too, I think that's part of their, their structure.
So pursue that differently, is what I'm hearing. Okay, and then, and then it sounds like there's definitely an add around trees, yes? And it's, you know, it's, obviously, the request needs to be focused on safety issues that trees pose, the impact of the bark beetle kill that's growing and growing.
Like dead trees.
Dead trees.
Yeah, the beetle kill.
And then the airport.
Yeah, the airport, I think that one's.
Oh, and the airport, excuse me, I had airport in my notes.
I really think it's important.
Do we want to separate that, though, out? Would it, or would it be, do we want to separate our infrastructure out?
I think we separate that one, because that, you know, a run, a runway to land a plane that's going to be that is, you've got to get out there and look at it, it's not, you'd have to, you'd have to take Highland Springs Road out. So while it sounds like a really good idea, it's, again, it's not realistic. And there's some things we could do out there, though, that would benefit some of the, some of the aircraft that is coming along, but the big planes that are flying out and you're seeing them come back 20. But the big planes that are flying out and you're seeing them come back 20 minutes later, it's not going to happen.
And that can be under the developer stuff that we were talking about, conversations. Get a developer that's going to put up.
And I know you didn't mean to, you didn't mean to beat it up, but you kind of did, and it's all good. Because we want to make sure our trip to DC is potent and that we make the right requests.
And I would also request that maybe, I don't believe that the airport committee has gotten together, and maybe the airport committee can be requested to meet and then offer suggestions as to what is needed from the FAA to enhance the airport. That way, it's not unrealistic, whatever it is that we're asking for.
Sure.
And also, Jessica brought up economic development. Is there any way that we can make a request for more opportunity zones in Lake County? The only opportunity zones right now are in Clear Lake. I'm very happy about that. But when we're talking about the entire county, there's no incentives, extra incentives, where 10 years after you do an investment inside Lake County and you sell off your investment, you don't have to pay capital gains. Like, there's, there's some pretty heavy-duty incentives built into the opportunity zones, and there are none outside of the city limits. And so if we can make a request to add more opportunity zones, I think that would be something that we can really benefit from.
Okay.
When are, when are you going?
Not until the end of October, so we got time.
So I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to make a big request of the board here. And I'll, you know, I appreciate Tina going, and I appreciate Tina's willingness to, she's not asking for any funding or anything like that. But I'm going to ask that, that maybe, that I tag along, and I'll pay my own way as well. Because I think you've got to have somebody in the room, like you, who have been involved with the recovery at one aspect of it, but somebody who's actually been on the ground and been involved with the infrastructure that we've already put in, and, and be able to identify those. This is not a, it's not a, you know, we don't get a lot of shots at this. And so I'm just throwing that out there. If Moke wants to go, Moke's been involved, but I think, you know, from, from the inception of our worst wildfire till now, there's no one on the board that's been as involved with the recovery and during the fires as I have. And I think that I have something to offer with that. And I, I'm just coming up with that right here as we're speaking. This isn't something I came into today's meeting hoping. But as I'm talking about this infrastructure, it's so important to get that done that I'm just throwing that out there if any, if there's any interest at all. And I'm not going to be offended if nobody wants me to tag along, but, so.
I agree. I think he's the supervisor that knows, I mean, he's the longest one standing here, and if there's information to know, he knows it. So if you're willing to go, I would appreciate you coming with your knowledge.
I'd be happy to do it.
I'll provide you the coordinates for the travel. That's a great idea. So we'll have this back on your agenda as soon as we possibly can. And if you want to beat it up again, feel free, because we want to get it right. And so maybe there's like a primary set of priorities that, you know, that we're carrying forward for this trip, and maybe there's a secondary set or whatever you want to call it, that are the other important things, but not necessarily what would be discussed. I mean, you can decide that, too, as we get there. Because I, I think the, the point is really valid that, that, you know, you want really a very focused, potent ask, and if you want to get anything, so. Appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I know that you're supposed to meet with the North Bay Construct, I forget the actual name of the group. Has there been any attempt to have meetings and appointments with other specific departments from the federal government, like HUD or the EPA, when you were talking about cleaning our rivers or streams, something of the kind? That way, it's not just what we can get from the meeting we've been invited to, but what we can get to the meetings that we've actually created and made appointments for. Just because, while we're there, let's try to have as many conversations with the different departments in different areas that could potentially help us, rather than just one group.
Yes, meetings are going to be set, in fact, probably are already set with officials from HUD, FEMA, and USDA in addition to our elected reps, federal electeds. And the plan is, with this coalition of folks that are going, is to divide up into committees that will focus on the various priorities. And so if there's more people on the Lake County team going, hopefully, we can have more representation if we want to, depending on how that committee breakdown works. And, and I know that there's going to be a pre-meeting with those that are planning to attend to figure that out, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, then I'm going to move on.
Appreciate it.
To our 7.5 item, consideration of resolution of intent to participate in consortium formed to address the region's water supply of the native andromous fisheries in the Eel River and the Upper Russian River. Anita?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is really housekeeping after speaking to Supervisor Crandall in making some of the changes that your board put forth. Those changes were made. There were some issues, as I indicated, in terms of just the, the read of this with rather than attaching something that I didn't have a date on for the two-basin solution to just give brief voice to it here. It also allowed to be able to keep the word "especially directed toward Lake Pillsbury businesses and residents." That's not the language used in Jared Huffman's attachment. So by separating that out, I was able to keep that word in as your board directed. And then finally, the, the prime issue was that it's not just endangered salmon, it is the fisheries that have to do with the Anadromus, native Anadromus fisheries. I'm looking at Supervisor Crandall because he's able to pronounce that, and I'm challenged. But, so it's just those housekeeping details, but I didn't.
I thought it was android mouse, so I've been.
Now, I'll say it that way, so thank you Supervisor Brown.
It means fish, it means fish from the ocean that come in and spawn and go back out.
Okay, thank you. But that is the verbiage that's used throughout by other participants. So in speaking with Supervisor Crandall, these small housekeeping changes are recommended. It's certainly not required, it's up to your board, but I don't have the authority to change your words, so that's why it's back today. And you don't ever want to give anyone that authority, by the way.
Supervisor Sabatier?
No. No comment.
Any comments or questions for the board before I open to the public? Is there any public comments or questions on this item? Seeing no movement.
This will supersede and replace the earlier resolution if your board determines to offer it for passage.
Thank you, Anita. I will offer the resolution.
The resolution's been offered, please call roll.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Hi.
Supervisor Crandall?
Hi.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye. Okay, with that, I think we have finished all our open session items.
If I may, real quick, I just want to give kudos. Ms. Grant, thank you so much for being accessible, efficient, and absolutely productive in any of the requests that I've asked you to work on with me. And I know that you've been doing the same with Supervisor Crandall and everyone else on this board. Every time I approach you, I get the results that I'm looking for, and, and I just can't appreciate, I can't say enough how much I appreciate working with you and what you do. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I echo that.
That's very kind, I'll screw something up now and say.
No, actually, last night.
And I'll call you out on that.
Last night, I was in a meeting, and I emailed Anita just so I wouldn't forget, and she got right back to me, and I was able to get, give the answer to the people I was meeting with. So that was great to be able to do that. Okay, with that, well, I will announce the closed session items. 8.1, Public Employee Evaluations, titled Director of Child Support Services. 8.2, Conference with Legal Negotiator, Chief Negotiator M. Long. County Negotiators, C. Hutchinson and P. Nichols. NB Employee Organization, LCDSA. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9 D2E3, Claim of Flesh. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9 D1, FBRC, Project Number 77, Potter Valley Hydroelectric Project. 8.5, Conference with Legal Counsel, Legal Counsel, Decision Whether to Initiate Legal Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9 D4, One Potential Case. And 8.6, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Pursuant to Governance Code, Section 54956.9 D1, Drake versus Kennedy et al. With that, we're in closed session.